Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for April 27, 2021. Of course, this meeting is a remote meeting, as all are during the pandemic. And tonight, we're going to have an executive session. So right now, I'd like to move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy relative to collective bargaining with the town collective bargaining units. The chair declares that it is necessary to go into executive session because to discuss strategy in open session may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. So all in favor of going into executive session indicate by saying aye. Nancy? Now, that was an aye. Heather?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So thank you. So Devin, could you lock us in?
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. And this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for April 27, 2021. Of course, this meeting is a remote meeting, as all are during the pandemic. And tonight, we're going to have an executive session. So right now, I'd like to move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy relative to collective bargaining with the town collective bargaining units. The chair declares that it is necessary to go into executive session because to discuss strategy in open session may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. So all in favor of going into executive session indicate by saying aye. Nancy? Now, that was an aye. Heather?
Aye.
Raul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So thank you. So Devin, could you lock us in?
Good evening, this is Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. And this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for April 27, 2021. Of course, this is a remote meeting, as are all our meetings during this COVID pandemic. And it is being videotaped. And the videotape, as well as the rest of the meeting, will be public record. So if you don't want to be, have your image in as a public record, please turn off the video if you come before us to speak. So let's start off with updates and announcements. Let me just say that Monday, May 4th, is the town election. I urge everyone to make sure to vote in the town election, either on Monday, or you can mail your ballots in, but it's probably best to drop off your mail-in ballots at Town Hall. There's a box in front of Town Hall that you can do that on. Or on Thursday, you can vote early from 8:30 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. I guess the other thing that I have to make comment on is the Alston case. Let me just say that I have not read the case, so I have no comment on it. My statement regarding this case is still on the Select Board's website. And I think it's still important information if you want to know how I think about this case. So with that, any further comments from the Select Board? Heather?
Thank you. Two things, real quick. Today, I got my first shot of the COVID vaccine. So I encourage everyone to pre-register and find an appointment. And then the other thing that I'd like to say is the Brookline Youth Awards is happening at the end of, well, actually, at the beginning of next month, May 8th, at the Coolidge Corner Theater in person, is by invitation only. I think it's for the nominees and their families. But you can catch it virtually. It's at 7:00 p.m. on Brookline Interactive Group or Brooklinehub.com.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, questions, or updates? No? Okay, John?
I think I heard you say Monday, May 4th, but I assume...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Tuesday.
I mean, we're all anxious for the election to take place.
I was still chewing on my M&amp;G sandwich.
Just two things I wanted to mention. And the first is that on Wednesday, the Brookline Commission for Women is having its Awards of Women of the Year Awards. That's at 7:30 on Wednesday. So I think that would be very useful for people to attend and well worth the recognition for those who are being recognized this year. And then Saturday, May 1st, is the beginning of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I think that this would be a good month to look at, not at the heritage, not just in terms of the wonderful cultural traditions that are embodied, but also in terms of this unfortunate wave of attacks on Asian Americans in this country and all of the serious discussions that we need to take part in as to where that is coming from and how we can make sure that the Asian American community in this country is safe. So I just thought I would recognize the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month coming up, starting this Saturday.
Hey, can I add one thing? Asian American is an important group in our community, but there's also a large Asian non-American community here in Brookline. And just keep in mind that they are also targeted in many ways, not just by hate crimes, but by, at least in the past few years, by government attacks. So I just want to make sure that we don't forget those residents and visitors to Brookline who are not American, but are, who are Asian individuals. Any other comments?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. So I did want to comment on the Alston case. I have read the 49-page SJC decision, and I do have a statement to share. And it's this. "After battling for a decade with Select Board members who were hostile to his cause, today, the Supreme Judicial Court declared total victory for firefighter Gerald Alston. It's been my honor to stand with Gerald and to seek justice where it was so clearly and long overdue. As the SJC said in their unanimous decision, the actions by the town were arbitrary, capricious, and in violation of firefighter Alston's rights under the civil service law to be treated fairly. The SJC went on to call the town's leadership deficient, insensitive, and inappropriate, if not outright discriminatory. They're right. I joined this board in large part to bring a justice-oriented approach to our leadership, and sadly, I've been challenged nearly every step of the way, the exception of my colleague Heather Hamilton. I've told my colleagues time and again that Brookline Select Board was on the wrong side of justice here, and for doing so, I, along with champions like the Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity Group, have been criticized as damaging the reputation of the town. No. It's the decisions of this board over many years in this matter and others that have cost Brookline reputationally and financially. Thousands of hours of in-house counsel time for this case alone, plus a half million dollars in outside counsel, and who knows how much in payouts when the dust settles. The persecution of Gerald Alston by this town's leadership has been a boondoggle of epic proportions and one that will cost us well into the future. Town Meeting saw this when it issued an apology to Gerald Alston in 2019, and yet this board continued its assault on Mr. Alston. Town Meeting saw this again in 2020 when it voted to block funding to the town's appeal after losing the Civil Service Commission decision. And yet this board persisted in persecuting Mr. Alston. It seems nearly everyone in Brookline saw this decision coming, except my colleagues. More recently, a colleague has used his available time and position to undermine the work of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, the Task Force to Reimagine Policing in Brookline, and the Patterns of Racism Working Group, three groups that are critical to turning the corner in Brookline. Sick of it, and it needs to stop now. While sitting board member criticizing his colleagues may not pass certain people's civility test, this moment is much bigger than that. This is not an academic issue for me, and it certainly isn't for Mr. Alston, who has suffered immeasurably, not just at the hands of Paul Pender, but at the hands of our town's leaders. So how do we move forward? It's clearly time for us to step away from those that chose to persecute Gerald Alston at great expense to our community, and instead to choose leadership that actually understands what justice looks like, without having to be told by a unanimous Supreme Judicial Court. I look forward to joining those leaders to begin the important work of making reparations, certainly to Mr. Alston, who deserves our gratitude for staying in this fight to make us better, a more responsible, more accountable, and more just community, but also to all those who've been denied justice through neglect, disinvestment, or outright discrimination. It's time we be who we say we are, or at least who we wish we were. Let's use this as a moment to re-center racial and economic justice in our community and to refocus our energies on moving Brookline forward. Thank you, and peace and love to Gerald Alston and his family. They deserve it. Thanks."
Okay, any other comments or announcements? Okay, let's move on to public comment. Heather, want to take over?
Sure, I understand that we have a couple of people signed up for public comment. Let me just first read my usual comments. "Thank you for joining us for public comment. We are all volunteer elected officials who serve out of a sense of duty to this community, and we do our best to represent as many different points of view that are in this community as possible. We have a few rules I'd like to share. Each person speaking is limited to three minutes. Please refrain from personal attacks or from addressing personnel issues during this period. You are welcome to send the board members an email expressing your thoughts in more detail. If a speaker has reached the three-minute limit or violates other expectations, I will ask the other board members if there are any objections before instructing Devin to mute the speaker. Let's begin."
The first person signed up for public comment is Rachel Oberai-Sulz. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. What I would like to comment on is that the Select Board meeting agendas include approval of expenditures, ongoing and new Brookline projects, associated contract agreements, and financial agreements. So I looked at the accounts and the budget for the current year and the next year. And for the fiscal year, I have questions here. For project funding allocation, is there a reference to previously approved budgets and expenditures for ongoing projects that are receiving new funding or incremental funding? Is there a reference to the above statement of current year fiscal year budget overruns or unspent funds and associated justification? And in particular, overruns? And the third is, is there a statement that aligns the previous two? A and B, and is it publicly available and reasonably accessible to the public on the web? I hope that this is an acceptable inquiry from a Brookline homeowner and resident of over, oh, over thirty years for sure. Uh, basically, when I looked at the budget, I could see what was allocated, but uh, at all of the meetings, there is allocation, and I could not find how those allocations impact the amount that was in the budget, and if there are overruns or if there is surplus, just couldn't see a traditional accounting statement. Thank you. That is my question.
I would encourage you to put that in writing and email us. Uh, it's very compl- complicated to try to answer those questions in the moment. Um, but I would encourage you to look on our website, OpenGov. Um, has a lot of the actuals.
Uh, I sent it to Kate McElveney, Mac Gillevany. Do I have the uh, the name incorrect?
She'll get it to the right person who will hopefully get you some answers.
And she referred me to the uh URL that basically I'm referencing and the statements I've just made. So there is no statement there that I could find of expenditure. What I could find was budget statements.
Okay, we we will review the response and and we'll be in touch.
That's rather passive, but uh, as a taxpayer, I would have expected a little more. Thank you. Even just a statement from your colleagues.
We don't typically respond during public comment.
Ah, all right, accepted. Thank you. I didn't know that.
The next person signed up for public comment is Ronald Wilkinson. Ronald, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
White supremacy has been a dominant force in the history of the US in law, in custom, in groups, and in individual acts of oppression. The forces opposing white supremacy in our country have always been the concepts of universal human rights and of liberty and justice for all. These have made slow but significant gains throughout our history, but the struggle, the struggle continues today. In Brookline, our focus over the past year has been on understanding how white supremacy has specifically infused law enforcement throughout our country, how we can call out the supremacist effect on law enforcement in our own community where we actually have some control, how we can correct any injustices that we find, and how we can prevent those injustices from reappearing or continuing into the future. Proposals have come from two groups mandated by the select board to investigate this issue. I believe that focusing solely on police misconduct has inadvertently led all of the proposals presented thus far to have a serious major flaw. They dangerously ignore the power of non-legal expressions of white supremacy to deliver unchecked oppression on our marginalized communities. The most vivid expression of that power has been the hate crimes committed by individuals that are presently sharing headlines with police misconduct. If we limit ourselves solely to addressing police-based rights abuses, one, by driving active white supremacist people and policies out of policing, and two, by limiting police interactions with civilians in order to curb any chance of something be misinflicting harm, I believe that white supremacy will just pour more energy into its non-legal expressions, such as more frequent, more serious, and more blatant hate crimes. To effectively fight hate crimes, I believe we need active anti-racist law enforcement that is grounded in a deep commitment to serve and protect everyone in our communities, especially those who have been marginalized. Creating and sustaining that kind of law enforcement requires recruiting personnel who genuinely believe in the mission, providing infrastructure and standards that enable them to actually fulfill the mission, and close accountable relationships both directly with community and with partner public services. To successfully serve and protect the community, law enforcement has to be both genuinely trustworthy and genuinely trusted by the community. I am one of the group who conducted the Brookline Police Personnel Survey, whose outcome will be presented later this evening.
You have thirty seconds.
A major factor in my personal take on the survey is that at least a substantial fraction of existing Brookline police personnel would be proud to serve in the kind of anti-racist, community-grounded, true service and protection for all police department that I am envisioning here. I believe these people can be key partners in successfully implementing an activist, human rights-oriented approach to public safety if just given the opportunity to do so. Thank you for hearing me.
The next person signed up for public comment is Miriam Ashkenazi. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Today, the highest court in Massachusetts, the Supreme Judicial Court, ruled in favor of firefighter Gerald Austin and against the town of Brookline, acknowledging the discrimination against Mr. Austin. Today, Gerald Austin finally got justice. Let us take a minute and acknowledge this win for Mr. Austin and his family, and to recognize this small measure of justice. This was a loss for Brookline's leaders in court, but it is undeniably a win for the residents and employees of Brookline. This is a chance for us to face our town's racism and do something about it to know better and to do better. The Supreme Court of Massachusetts reviewed and upheld the Massachusetts Civil Service Commission decision in favor of Mr. Austin, a decision that found he was discriminated against and then retaliated against by town employees and officials at all levels, including the select board. Many have objected to how the town treated Mr. Austin over the eleven years this case has been active, and Weaver, town meeting member for Precinct Eleven, and myself submitted and passed a budget amendment in spring twenty twenty asking that we cease funding the racist litigation. Town meeting passed it, but a majority of select board members, Members Green, Heller, and Van Soyak refused to abide by that vote. The select board's choice to continue fighting decisions that were in favor of Mr. Austin is unacceptable and has come at a great moral and financial cost. Consider the tremendous harm to firefighter Austin and Brookline's reputation, and think about the untold amounts of taxpayer money the select board has spent on the litigation and attorney fees. In its decision today, the Massachusetts Supreme Court specifically called our select board's handling of Mr. Austin's legitimate and serious racism complaint, quote, woefully deficient and insensitive, end quote, and called the town's overall response after Mr. Austin raised his complaint, quote, continuously insensitive and inappropriate, if not outright discriminatory, end quote. We have to do better. Should I be elected to the select board, I will staunchly oppose subjecting employees to discrimination and mistreatment. It is morally wrong, reflects poorly on the town, and it is bad governance. We need to make things right with Mr. Austin and to do better as a town. Join me in demanding that we treat people of color and our public employees with dignity. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Chiba Obelay. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm going to change the topic just a little bit um to something that I think you guys know is uh important for for me, and that's being able to afford to live in Brookline. Um, it's a very expensive place to live, um, especially if you don't have regular employment like me. So I want to encourage you um to think about when the short-term rental warrant articles come up for a vote and later in May, I'd like to encourage you guys to consider amending or an Article fifteen so that me and my girlfriend will be able to do short-term rentals for more than ninety days. Um, now, there are those who say that short-term rentals create nuisances such as excessive noise, but there's little evidence or data to back that up. As the Planning Department noted in two thousand twenty, quote, "The number of overall complaints against short-term rentals has been low, particularly compared to the overall estimate of total units." Indeed, since two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty, the total number of complaints in Brookline submitted against a short-term rental has been approximately thirty, yes, thirty complaints, and the most common ones have been late-night, early-morning arrivals, knocking on the wrong door, car doors slamming at odd hours, or noises in the hall or corridors. But for five years, there were only thirty complaints, and very, very few involved calling the police. For the sake of comparison, out of the three hundred and forty-seven noise complaints reported to the Brookline Police between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, only one, yes, one, involved in Airbnb. The majority, the overwhelming majority of those complaints involve long-term tenants, particularly students. That means that short-term rentals generated far fewer noise complaints to police than traditional lease departments. Um, and I'd also like to address the other concern by saying that a large number of Airbnb listings in Brookline consists of spare rooms that were never part of the long-term rental market, and therefore they do not lead to diminished housing supply. Many short-term rentals consist of nothing more than a spare bedroom and a home occupied by an owner or a family.
You have thirty seconds.
The overall number of these spare rooms is a small fragment of the housing market. Compared to over fifteen thousand rental units operating in Brookline, the number of spare bedrooms which are rented on Airbnb totals less than two percent. That percentage is simply too small to inflate the cost of the unit. In many cases, these spare rooms were never part of the long-term rental stock to begin with, and they have never been occupied by long-term tenants, were never intended to serve as rental units, and would not be offered for long-term rent. Um, and there's more I'd like to share, but unfortunately, my time is up, and thank you for listening to me.
The next and final person signed up for public comment is Anne Weaver, and you've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Anne Weaver, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eleven. Thank you, Dr. Fernandez, for your supportive statement of firefighter Gerald Austin, who has asked for justice from this town over and over and over for many years. We have two current select board members who are actively complicit in the mistreatment and firing of Mr. Austin, responses which were clearly and strongly ruled against this morning by the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. Both of these select board members are running for reelection in next week's town election. Please support any of the other select board candidates with your vote. But in my opinion, especially Dr. Miriam Ashkenazi, who can help lead this town in the right direction. We need change in this town. It is way, way overdue. And now is the time. Thank you.
I do want to make the board aware that uh that was our allotted fifteen minutes for public comment, but that we do have one attendee who is raising their hand and would like to speak. Uh, so I'll uh give your discretion if we want to include one more person.
Let's do it.
The next person signed up for public comment is Debra Brown. Debra, you've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, select board. When, when I, when I heard the Austin decision and and then I, I, I quickly read it, and one of the things that 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 struck me was implicit in that incredibly thoughtful decision was was an an air of kindness. And what, what I also heard in that decision was, in order to be good leaders, you have to think about how your actions impact people. And it, it made me think about what it is to be a Brookline resident, what it is to call myself a progressive, uh, what it means for any number of us to call ourselves progressive. And it's, it's about, you know, acting and serving for the common person, that ordinary person. That's, 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 that's who we're all supposed to be representing, whether we're town meeting members or select board members. And that includes the elderly, disabled, uh, low-income, people of color. They have to have a clearer place at the table. And to that end, it means that we need to invest more in affordable housing. We need to make a commitment to the tenants and the residents at Brookline Housing Authority that we will find the financial means to help improve their housing, and including Wi-Fi. We have to look at our elders, whether they're in public housing or their own homes, and say to them that we are going to redouble our efforts to make sure that you have the essential services that you need to either live independently or live with care. Why can't Brookline provide the two thousand dollars that Newton does to senior citizens for home repairs? That could be a huge difference for some people. We need to rethink the way we police. So I'm, I'm asking us to do two things. To lead and not only talk about being progressive, talk about being kind, but to do kind, to lead and and to move this town beyond where I'm sure many people in Brookline and beyond are saying, what kind of town is that, that they let litigation drag out for ten years? When one could have reasonably foreseen the outcome after, you know, the initial decisions. So I'm asking you to really rethink the way that you, that you do business. So, thank you.
That concludes the public comment period.
Okay, back over to you, Bernard.
Hey, thank you.
Just a reminder, I will have to step away from the meeting at seven.
Yeah, and let me also uh let people know that Nancy Heller um ha- has an ailment and uh is not going to be participating in the meeting uh today, so uh, she, she had a fall and and um has some pain, so. But otherwise, she's all right, so don't get worried. Okay, uh, next item, question of approving the meeting minutes from April twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, I take it everyone has had a chance to give their comments or edits to Kate. Um, so I'd like to call approval for the mi- approval of the minutes of April twenty, two thousand twenty-one. On favor, uh, start off with Heather.
Hi.
Uh, Ro.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, next, we have a bunch of uh uh items that will be taken in omnibus fashion. I'm gonna just read what they are so that people know what we're going to be voting on. Uh, the select board, of course, has had an opportunity to read, to uh read the background material and uh make any comments or or suggestions ahead of time.
Are we making the police promotion separately?
Uh, do you want to do that?
I, I think it's probably best if we do.
Okay. Um, I'll come back to item six B after I'd uh left to re-vote on the others. Okay, item six C, question of authorizing the request to fill a vacant economic development long-term planner position in the Planning Department. Six D, approving the, uh, authorizing the chair or his designee to execute contract amendments for the following CBBGCV, which is COVID um CARES Act-funded activities. Uh, Brookline Safety Net for seventy-one thousand thirty-four dollars, Brookline Food Pantry for two hundred forty thousand dollars. Let's see, economic development, long-term planning, business assistance for a hundred thousand dollars, and BHA coronavirus response, hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Total five hundred thirty-one thousand thirty-four dollars um with respect to contract amendments that need to be signed so that the money can be just, can be distributed. Uh, six E is taken off the agenda. Six F is a contract amendment uh for the new Driscoll School in the amount of thirteen hundred twenty dollars for added survey services uh to confirm building height as requested by the Brookline Fire Department. Uh, six G, question of approving uh proposed transformer licenses for EverSource Work um at uh to it, to uh for the installation of the new permanent electric service at the Michael Driscoll School. Six H, approving a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security uh Department of Fire Services for fire safety equipment in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Six I, question of approving uh grants from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency in the amount of five thousand dollars to support the Brookline Citizen Emergency Response Training or CERT program. Six J, question of approving the following transfer from the Building Department budget from uh Town Hall um five thousand dollars to, I'm sorry, Town Hall Repair and Maintenance, five thousand dollars to a different a different account and for Town Hall Supplies, five thousand dollars. And next, from a Town Hall salaries account of seventeen thousand dollars to Town Hall Cleaning Services of seventeen thousand dollars. And finally, item six K, question of approving temporary all kinds beverage sales license to Game Hinge Golf LLC during business as Hemlock Grill from April thirty, two thousand twenty one to May twenty nine, two thousand twenty one. And this is a temporary license pending, temporary daily license pending their, their permanent license. I see Mr. Clackner, Mel, you have a.
I did want to address six K. I know it's part of your omnibus vote, but the, the restaurant owner there would like to take advantage of the Sunday brunch hours, which are allowed and really restaurants can choose to do those. And they opted to do those. Those don't appear on their paperwork, but on Sunday at ten AM is when they intend to open to do brunch. These are one day licenses because the license we issued to the golf course vendor is a special golf course seasonal type of license. And so in the early months, we instead authorize a number of one day licenses to get them to that, that timeframe when they can get a regular license.
Great. Okay, I move approval of items six C through six K on favor, excluding six E, of course. On favor, Heather.
Hi.
Raul.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Chair votes I. Okay, we're going back to six B. Question of authorizing the request to fill the following vacant positions by promotion in the police department. Two deputy superintendents, two lieutenants and two sergeants. Any discussion or questions about that? Heather.
What happens if we don't promote them?
Chaos.
I would like to hear.
I don't know. What, what, what would happen, Chief Morgan?
Well, actually it'd be like driving a car down the road with only two wheels. As far as the command staff is, is down, we down three positions. I'm trying to fill two of them. Deputy Superintendent Ward, who's trying to make fourteen, he's been out on long term illness. So I know how it just made my job more difficult just with him being out on April, this Friday, Deputy Superintendent Burke is retiring. So you didn't want, don't move to fill those positions. I'm driving on maybe a two, two wheel cat on the street.
Okay, any, any other questions? And, and I guess in light of the upcoming need to incorporate the provisions of the police reform bill, state police reform bill. Having those vacancies just makes it very difficult to comply with the requirements of the law to the detriment of, of our, of our citizens, of our residents. Raul, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Chief, is, is your plan to to promote from within or, you know, much has been made about the diversity of the department and that, that the racial diversity department is, is, I don't want to say exclusively, but, but significantly at the lower levels of the lower ranks. You know, if, if where I am, where I work, if we wanted to start to diversify the, the upper levels, we would with open positions look outside of, of our department to try to fill those positions. Is that something that we can do? Is that something that you plan to do?
This is something we cannot do based on the civil service law. So the deputy superintendent positions were negotiated out of civil service. They had previously civil service captain positions. And the negotiations with the union was that any further promotions, the deputy superintendent would become the rank of Brookline Police Officers who were currently lieutenant in the department. Civil service governs the promotions to sergeants, lieutenants, as far as the test, how they're administered, how they're scored and what the weight is on each, on the test as far as training experience versus exam scores. And as far as the, from the deputy superintendent rank, the non-union non-civil service positions, but I am limited to the current lieutenants in the Brookline Police Department. As far as in the sergeant's level and as far as on the, we have three females are that are on the list as far as the consideration in this testing process, which is, you know, women are historically underrepresented in law enforcement. And at the lieutenant rank is one individual who's a Russian immigrant to this country and also one individuals of A A, A A P I, excuse me, as, as a candidate. So at some point, you know, they're going to be ready for promotions and within the civil service procedures, this is what I have to promote from.
So currently according to, so currently according to the way they, so you mentioned the civil service, but apparently our own union contract prohibits this. So currently the only way to get diversity at the upper ranks is to hire somebody at the lower ranks and hope they stick around long enough to eventually make it to sergeant, lieutenant or superintendent and not end up going to another community. Is that right?
Currently, yes. Based on the size of Brookline, it's a town of fifty thousand people. So the first time someone has to be a patrol officer for three years before they can take the, except for the exam. If the exam depends when it falls, it could be of, you know, four years or more till the next text comes, depending when they hit that three year mark.
That is remarkable and, and frankly, I know this is not, this is not your policy, Chief, frankly ass backwards. The, the other, the other thing I wanted to ask is, um, there is a, there, there are lots of conversations still ongoing. The Brookline Housing Authority is taking a look at the walk and talk program, school resource officers or the, the school committee is looking at the SROs. If, and then eventually the, you know, whatever this board looks like after the May fourth election will be taking these things up too. You know, the, do you, what impacts, if any, let's say these boards decided to, to eliminate certain departments within, you know, the ones that I just mentioned, would the, what impacts would that have on the, the list of positions that we have before us today, if any?
I, I don't foresee any at this time. I mean, as far as at some point of view cut to us the, the police department's table organization and manpower would be, you know, we have to look at that, but as far as when we're talking about recruiting and trying to get people here to have a future in a, in a profession, it's got to inhibit that as people can come on, you know, to take the job that they may think they may lose their job as they go to an academy. And then the limiting the opportunities for promotion doesn't seem like a profession that we want to get into.
Right. And we are certainly not going to have positions just, just to have positions for that purpose, but, but I, but I get your point. All right, that, I, I think I'm good. I, I don't feel ready to vote on this frankly today, but that's where I am.
Well, it's on the agenda. You don't want to vote. What are the board members think? Are you ready, Heather?
I, I'm prepared to vote.
Okay. So unless there are any other questions. Chief, actually I have a question. Were there any black or Hispanic officers who took the test that is, is, is being looked at now? Or from which the list of potential sergeants is, is drawn?
No, there's none on the list that, that shows any that is people who passed the exam. So I'm not sure who sat for the exam, but the list does not include anybody.
John.
Sorry, just want to be sure I'm on mic. Chief, if you don't mind, could you just say a little bit more about the individuals who are going to be promoted into these positions? Just so that the, the folks who are watching at home, excuse me, have a sense of the leadership of the department once these appointments are made.
I, I can't speak specifically to, to individuals. I can tell you the makeup of the list as I did. As far as once the command staff, would you go to fill the openings? I'm not sure. Depending on who gets promoted based on their background, their education, their experience, I'd try to put them in, in the best offer them the best season, best to help the department based on where they go within the structure of the department. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Just to be clear, John, this request is to seek the board's authorization to fill the, the vacant positions and then we would have to requisition or seek a civil service list from the, the state for lieutenant, sergeants and lieutenants. And then as Mark said, he would evaluate the candidates who apply for deputy superintendent. So we don't, we don't know that yet.
We already have the list. We have it, you know, we've had it for a period of time. The test was, was just given. It's a recent list of being, exists about two years. So I'm ready to move forth as far as to fill these positions of these imminent retirements.
Will this come back to us for approval of the individual?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Heather, are you?
I was just about to say, if you want me to vote, we got to do it now because I'm about to leave.
Okay, I'm of approval of the question of authorizing the request to fill the vacant positions in the police department, two deputy superintendents, two lieutenants and two sergeants. All in favor, Heather?
Yes.
Raul.
Uh, you know, I think there's just too many balls in the air right now that we have to figure out before doing this. So. Excuse me. So I will, I will abstain on this vote. Thank you.
John.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you, Chief Morgan.
I'll try to redefine af- after my, my other meeting.
Okay.
Respectfully, Chair, I'm not the first person on this board to do that during a vote. It happens quite frequently. And I don't appreciate being called out in that way when this is something that happens frequently here, that people make comments during voting. So I don't appreciate that.
Wait, do, do what? I'm not sure what I'm, what I'm accused of doing here.
Be asked to vote while I'm making comment. It happens quite frequently and, you know, by other board members and I don't, I don't appreciate being called out in that way.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you know, sometimes, you know, we're, we're sort of rushing through and, and, you know, we talk over each other. That, that's, that's life. But I'll try to avoid it. Let's see, next item, common victor license. This is separate from the, and this is for Hemlock Grill. So it's separate from the previous question we approved, which was for temporary liquor license. This is for their, this is their common victor, victor license, which is the right to serve food. And I see there's someone here to speak to this and it's Chris Yordi.
Yes.
Heard of you. Now we see you.
Hi.
Go ahead. Tell us about, tell us a little bit about yourself and what.
Well, my partner and I have a, have a restaurant background. Various styles, mostly in Cambridge, Somerville. So we bring a full service and hospitality background to the golf course. But also understanding that, you know, the golf course has specific casual needs and, and that kind of thing. So we just want to activate all the areas, the pavilion at the turn, the, the driving range, the beverage cart and the clubhouse. So we're working pretty closely with Justin to you know, make sure that all services are available all the time. And, and, you know, really just get up to snuff with the amenities that most other municipal or otherwise golf courses offer.
Okay, anything to add now?
No, I would only say that the actual liquor license, which is a golf course license, a special license is being applied for, and that's why we did the one day licenses. But as you pointed out, this is the common victory of the restaurant operation and this is the the procurement that was so, so much in the news.
We know about this procurement. So this is actually a application of a common victor, victor. I need to learn how to pronounce that word. Victuare license as well as an entertainment license. And that would consist of radio and television from seven AM to ten PM. Fortunately, there are no residential properties nearby that would hear this. So that's not an issue for us. Any discussion or comments from the select board? John.
Welcome to Brookline, Chris. I just want to say, you know, something that I think is on the minds of a lot of people and, and is let's just say hanging in the air here, which is that, you know, you're stepping into a situation out of your own making. And you're, you're the successor to a vendor who was very popular in Brookline and had a lot of support for continuing as the, as the vendor there. And one of the things, but you know, thing for reasons that are, I think by now well known. The, the park and recreation commission has decided to go with a new vendor. That's you. Welcome to Brookline again. And one of the things that made Lisa so, so popular with the, the townsfolk is that she was there for community events. She was there for charitable events. Can, can you just give us your, some assurance that you're aware of that history and that you're going to try to live up to that history?
Absolutely. So I, I think it's going to be, listen, I was in all those meetings, listening to the outpouring of support for Lisa and then I spent a week with her when she was moving out and I was offering her the ability to use our space while, while we're there to keep her commitment through the, the summer and everything. You know, we understand my whole career in restaurants, you know, just serving good food doesn't you know, strictly dictate success. You need, you need to be involved in the community. So once we get our feet under us, we would love to make the same connections that Lisa had. You know, whether it's donations of food, time, the space. All of that stuff is on the table and we've talked to Justin about this and I've talked to Lisa about this. Who can she connect me with to say, well, these guys are used to, you know, coming in during Thanksgiving or getting boxed lunches for, you know, whatever it is, you know, all those things are on the table for us. It's hard for me to predict exactly, you know, what, what we can do because the space is so new to us. We don't even know what to expect on the golf course, you know, in terms of traffic and all that stuff. So. But I can give you a lot of references for charities and organizations that I've worked with in Cambridge and Somerville with my other, you know, restaurant spaces in the, in the past that you know, can vouch for the fact that we want to be involved at all times with, you know, anyone that needs help or, or whatever. So. Again, I don't have the list of folks that I should reach out to yet, but Lisa has promised me that she will connect me to everyone that she's worked with in the past. If she's unable to work with them in the future, I can take over. For now, we're just trying to figure out my way around the building and learn the keys to the dungeons down there and figure out how we can serve water to, to the golfers. But but yeah, you know, that's, that's something that we want to continue. That's Alex and I are, are always, we've always known that the neighborhood is, is how you succeed. So.
Chris, thank you. That, that, that's, it's what, I welcome those, caught that answer by you and I I, I welcome future opportunity to maybe stop by and say hi, but thank you.
Yeah, I, I thank you also for being willing to reach out to Lisa and, and engage with her. And you know, Lisa is someone we all know and, and love. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that she's willing to talk to you and, and help in this transition. So.
No, she was great and we had, we had a great week together. Her moving out and everything and, and all that. She was great.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussions? This is not a hearing. Okay, I'd like to move approval of the application of a new common victor for Game Hinge Golf LLC doing businesses at, as Hem, Hemlock Grill twelve eighty one West Roxbury Parkway, hours of operation Monday through Sunday, seven AM to ten AM. And seating of fifty seats inside and sixty seats outside. And in addition, approving the application for an entertainment license, which will consist of radio and television, Monday through Sunday, seven AM to ten PM. By the way, your outdoor seating, is that just on the patio on the deck there or are you going down on the ground?
Uh, so the patio is kind of two tiered. I guess I kind of grouped that in together.
Okay.
The, the, the street level and then one tier below. I just kind of grouped that in. I think it was already previously approved for about sixty. According to the fire department.
I never ate downstairs.
Well, I just think it's, you walk downstairs, it's some additional tables below more. Well, I just think it's, uh, you walk downstairs, it's some additional tables, none below, more, uh, eighteenth hole level.
All right, okay, great, okay, uh, on favor, um, let's see who's left, Row.
Hi.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Chris Yordi, it's good meeting you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next, Chief Information Technology Officer Appointment, uh, question of approving the appointment of Feng Yang as the Chief Information Technology Officer for the town of Brookline, as recommended by the town administrator. Um, I'll just say that I, I've worked with Feng for a long, yeah, quite a while. Uh, I never knew that her resume would be, or, or curriculum vitae would be so, uh, impressive. Um, so, um, we're, we're very, very lucky to, um, you know, have her, you know, working for us for twenty-five years and, and, and now being able to step into the top position. And we're, we're quite lucky, but, uh, anything you want to say, uh, Mel?
I do, I do, I, I want to sort of make a more, some formal remarks and, um, acknowledge, uh, this, because the appointment of department heads is a big deal for me, and I know for the board, and in this particular case, uh, I'm moving forward without, uh, the typical process, so I do want to document that just a bit, so first of all, I'm pleased to recommend, uh, for the select board's approval, this evening, the appoint of, appointment of Feng Yang as Chief Information Officer. Uh, as you may know, uh, Ms. Yang was appointed a year ago to fill the acting CIO position when Kevin Stokes had unexpectedly resigned. Um, as you pointed out, she's worked for the town for twenty-five years, uh, most recently as the Director of IT Applications and Digital Services. And, uh, as you also point out, she's got a master's degree, uh, very strong background in all facets of IT and information systems. So normally, I recommend candidates for department head only after using an open competitive process that employs a, uh, citizen review panel. On, on rare occasions, the conditions exist for me to waive this process, it's not a legal process, it's a, it's a, just a management process that I've adopted, um, or have continued from predecessors as well, uh, but in this case, um, with, um, Feng having been appointed, uh, literally on the doorstep of COVID nineteen, a worldwide pandemic, which literally changed overnight, demands that the town had to work remotely and to basically operate its, uh, government, its local government, uh, remotely. Uh, she stepped in, and not only stepped in, but really, uh, took charge of, uh, the, uh, IT requirements and the technical requirements and did a great job, and you know, you always wonder, you know, when you appoint somebody, uh, you know, whether, you know, how they will act in, in, in a situation like this, well, I was able to observe Feng over the last twelve months and before, but over the twelve months, she's really grown into this job, and, uh, I, I feel very confident uh, with my recommendation of her appointment today. Um, so with that, I strongly recommend for your consideration and approval, the appointment of Ms. Feng Yang as Chief Information Officer.
Hey, any, uh, questions? Comments? John?
So Feng is not here though, right, so we can't.
She's not here.
Not here, okay, I, I just wanted, no, I want to be sure, I, I, I was hoping to just, uh, you know, flatter her.
Yeah, you know, I, 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 I think, uh, she was probably not too comfortable with that, she has a.
Well, I, in that case, I just want to, um, sort of back up what Mel said, um, he obviously knows the situation much better than I do, because he's worked, you know, more continuously and on, on many more occasions with, than I have. What I have done is to, you know, observe a lot of meetings over time, and some of those meetings, she, she was there, she was kind of featured, she was featured as the, the person making a presentation on the department, the, the budget, the, the work of the department, um, the people who work for the department. I, I can't say enough good things about her on the basis of, uh, th- those occasions, when I saw her in action, um, facing questions, sort of speaking up for the, her work, speaking up for the department's work, um, and I just, uh, totally concur with Mel, um, that we, I won't call it luck, because it, you know, it takes a certain amount of planning and, and care to, um, recruit and to hire people of this caliber, but, um, this is a person of the highest caliber, and it's delightful to, uh, be part of approving this.
Great, uh, Row?
Yeah, I'll just briefly add that she's brilliant, she's personable, she's eminently qualified, and she has my full support, thanks for, um, for doing this, Mel.
Yeah, and by, uh, let me just add, uh, she, uh, came into, uh, town of Brookline twenty-five years ago and moved up through the ranks, and now she's our third, uh, person of color who is a department head with, uh, Dr. Jelena, Dr. Jet, and now Feng Yang. Uh, I think that's significant, um, I hope people acknowledge it, and, um, I think that that's a good deal, a good thing. So, uh, unless there are any other discuss, any other discussion or comments, um, I'd like to move approval of the application, uh, for the appointment of Feng Yang as the Chief Information Technology Officer for the town of Brookline, as recommended by the town administrator, on favor, Row.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, question of appointing the new poet laureate of Brookline as recommended by the Brookline Commission for the Arts. And this is Jennifer Barber, and I'm sure everyone has read the poems she included in the, uh, in her application, uh, which were in our packet. So, you know, we, we, so we, we, we know something about her before we approve the appointment, so I see Daniel Gustin is here to, um, to, uh, present this.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you, uh, you all a brief overview of the process and just, uh, just, uh, some of the reasons why we chose Jennifer. Um, thank you for having me back, and, uh, so the, there's a, a special search committee within the, uh, the art, uh, commission for the arts, uh, that meets to make recommendations to the commissioners at large. Um, so there were two commissioners who sat on, on this committee, um, one of them acted as chair, uh, and she herself was a professor of poetry, um, is now retired. Uh, there were, uh, seven others from the community, including other poets, uh, actually, one of the former, uh, Brooklyn poet laureates was, uh, sat on the committee as well. Um, community and other community members. They met on Tuesday, April thirteenth, and they, they voted unanimously to recommend that Jennifer be, uh, re- uh, recommended by the BCA to the select board for appointment for the poet laureate. Um, so last time we, I was here, we talked a little about, bit about expanding, uh, the selection criteria for uh, the poet laureate program, and we did have two, uh, two of the four candidates who applied, uh, were not strictly traditional poets, they, one was a novelist, um, uh, who has worked at, uh, who had received education from Boston area schools, um, as well as one other, uh, Brooklyn resident who was, uh, uh, whose media includes hip, uh, hip hop and rap through his poetry. Um, we, uh, so I was not part of the selection committee, but, uh, the, uh, the committee's uh, recommendation was voted on unanimously by the BCA at large, uh, which I wholeheartedly support. Um, Jennifer is, uh, an outstanding community member here in Brookline, she's participated in a lot of poetry reads at the Brookline Booksmith, and at other, uh, creative outlets in town, but also in Boston area, participating in the Boston Poetry Festival, and others in Somerville and Cambridge, uh, her education's impressive, she, uh, was a Rhodes Scholar to Oxford, studying, uh, old and middle English and French literature, and most recently has taught at Wellesley and at, um, uh, Suffolk University as a scholar and residence. Uh, so for these reasons, uh, bringing together, bro, you know, elevating poetry in Brookline, as well as throughout the area, and also in the region, she won the prestigious McDowell Colony Fellowship, uh, out of New Hampshire. It's a very, uh, impressive literary achievement, uh, in New England. Uh, we voted unanimously to, uh, promote her, so I present her to you.
Okay, I take it she's not here, though, okay.
I don't think so.
Could, could you send a message that, um, uh, first of all, I'm excited to have, uh, poet laureate who is, uh, their expert in old English, um, Chaucer was some, was the one thing that made, uh, English really, really exciting to me in college, uh, a, a name I had never heard of before college, but anyway, um, i- i- the other thing is, uh, I urge you to, uh, you know, talk to previous poet laureates about, uh, the role that they played in the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Event, uh, we've always, uh, since I've been chair, uh, always tried to include poets, including the poet laureate in our program, uh, because poetry is such a, eh, eh, important way of, of conveying, uh, thoughts that may be complex in prose form, but, uh, can be you know, more easily, uh, digested, uh, using, you know, poetry. So, you know, that's, you know, one thing I hope that we can continue.
Uh, the, uh, to that point, actually, it is in the, the guidelines of the program that, uh, the poet laureate, whether they, you know, be a poet or otherwise does participate in the MLK Day.
Good, okay, any other, uh, questions or comments? John?
I want to thank Dan for, um, not only for this selection, but for putting up with, um, some of my, I'm sure at times annoying interventions.
We all have to put up with that, John.
They, please trust me, they were well-intentioned, and if I had to write a poem about the outcome of this process, it would be all's well that ends well, uh, which I know is a play, not a poem, but, um, uh, I, I, I have, I, I happen to know that the just, um, retired, the immediate predecessor poet laureate is delighted with this choice. Um, uh, I also know that Jennifer's neighbors are delighted with this choice, um, and, um, of course, I'm delighted with this choice, uh, so I can only thank, uh, the Commission for the Arts for sticking with it and, uh, and, uh, coming up with, um, just an excellent, excellent person to, um, that, that Brookline, I think, will, um, learn a lot from, you know, and just by her presence at some events where, um, she will bring poetry to the event and, um, bring greater understanding and greater appreciation of the arts to all of us, thank you again, Dan.
Thank, thank you, and, you know, your, your comments and your, um, uh, interventions, as you say, um, you know, just made us really think, think about what we wanted, so it, it helps solidify our positions, so thank you.
Great, great.
Row?
Sure, I'll, I'll just say thank you, I know, I know that this is, um, this has been a long process and, and one that, you know, Daniel, you've been here numerous times now, and um, I, I just, I just really appreciate how steadfast you've been in, in, um, in, in trying to make this work, uh, and to address some of the, the more, um, structural issues around the poet laureate, if it makes sense. Uh, I, I, I think this is a, eh, a phenomenal choice, eh, I, I really appreciate everything she laid out about, um, going above and beyond even the charge to, um, to engaging deeply with, with elders as well as youth in Brookline, uh, in all the different ways she lays out in her, in her memo here, so a phenomenal choice, I would just encourage you all to, um, continue to think, um, as we, as we develop the poet laureate over time, to think about, um, some of the, um, the representation issues and making sure that, um, that we have folks of color and people with disabilities and, um, young people, uh, you know, somewhere in the mix along the way, and so, you know, as the years go on, that we have, we have an eye toward that to making sure, because we only have one poet laureate at a time, uh, to making sure every time we have an opportunity to have a new poet laureate, that we think through, um, you know, diversity as, as part of that, and all the different ways that that manifests itself, um, thanks.
Uh, yeah, I just, so, really quick about that, uh, we, you know, that's something that came up in, uh, I was not at the meeting, at the select, selection meeting, but um, I did read the minutes and that did come up, um, about, you know, more representation, especially of younger artists. Um, and that would, you know, kind of simultaneously address some of the diversity issues, um, and we as a commission, uh, at our next meeting are going to discuss uh, the possibility of creating an emerging artist program that we will administer, um, so hopefully that will also broaden some opportunities.
Sounds great, thank you.
Great. Okay, unless there is any other discussion, I'd like to move approval of the appointment of poet laureate Jennifer Barber, uh, as recommended by the Brookline Commission for the Arts, on favor, Row?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Bartlett Circle, I'm sorry, forty-five Bartlett Crescent Project Eligibility Letter. I see Alison Seinfeld is here, and I assume everyone has read the, uh, draft of the letter that she put together, I thought it was a very good draft. Um, I didn't, I didn't have my usual, uh, concerns with it, so.
Careful with adverts.
Okay, here, okay, any, any discussion of, of this, uh, letter? Uh, Row?
Yeah, no, I'll just say, Alison, as always, you put together a phenomenal letter and, and really did a great job of including the feedback of the board, as well as, uh, members of the community, so thank you for that. Um, you know, the only thing I, I, I want to just say, just like, just put a fine point on it is, is the piece about open space, I think is absolutely critical, and um, what I would say is not all open spaces created, created equally, right, open space can be a, a, you know, setback of all cement, or it can be, you know, a bed with, 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 with trees and, and flowers, and, and I think we're looking for the latter, right, and so just, um, you know, for those that are, that are looking at, at building here, just to know, you know, my, my position is, is everything we build should add to the tree canopy in some way, and should add green space to the community in some way, so the idea of taking lots where, where there isn't any green space, and through building, creating it, um, I think is a win for the town, and so, uh, I know we only have so much, um, you know, leverage here, but I think, um, incorporating this as you have in these letters is a really important part of, of sending a message to, um, not just this particular developer, but others about what we're looking for as a community, so thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, the, the, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Uh, just, I was just going to ask, um, Alison, if she wouldn't mind, um, uh, for the benefit of the public and maybe me also, can you just give a brief description of what happens next?
Uh, I will submit the letter on your behalf by Friday, which is the deadline. Uh, mass housing will take it into consideration, will all, in all probability, issue a project eligibility letter. And once an applicant has that tell, they will come to us, apply for a comprehensive permit. We have thirty days, uh, to open up a public hearing before the ZBA, and then the process begins. I can go through the rest of the process, but.
No, uh, but, um, given how these things usually go, uh, when might Brookline see the completion of a project like this?
Uh, usually the ZBA, which is extremely diligent in reviewing proposals, go, takes more than the hundred and eighty days. We usually take between eight to twelve months in reviewing it, um, and then about, it can take upwards of a year to get a building permit, and then usually a year, year and a half to build.
Yeah.
That's assuming it go, everything goes smoothly and there's no litigation.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, uh, you know, this, um, let's see, last weekend, um, or last week, uh, I was driving to New York to see my daughter in Brooklyn, and I noticed, uh, a veritable, veritable forest on top of some of the buildings, um, and trees, as well as other, uh, greenery. Now, you know, of course, to do something like that requires a lot of, uh, structural, um, you know, components that can hold the weight and everything, but I wonder if, if there's some way that we can encourage, uh, developers to, um, put some of the green space, not, not some of the green space, but, but put some green, um, uh, components that, uh, on, of their built, make some of the components of their buildings green, for example, uh, gardens or, or, uh, other, um, you know, vegetation on, on roofs or on, you know, side of the building, et cetera. I mean, it's just a small thing, but I think, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we ought to encourage, um.
We've actually begun discussions with the developer on that, and I'm not sure it's a possibility in this building, although it's early to say, uh, because he's incorporating solar. But it's something we always keep in mind.
Yeah, good. Okay, um, any further questions? I think we can vote on favor of the, uh, um, uh, draft, uh, project, uh, um, P E L letter, um, for the forty-five Bartlett Crescent, uh, project, um, say aye, uh, Row?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so I have to come in and, and sign that, right, I'm supposed to sign.
We'll make arrangements.
Okay, no, I can come in, so, nobody, yeah, I'm fully vaccinated.
I am too, thanks.
Okay, uh, I see Joe Viola's here.
I'm here.
Okay, um, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee recommendation, so Joe, tell people about this. So, maybe that I was, uh, actually chair, yeah.
Right, so, so in keeping with HUD's requirements, we, uh, the town has to submit an annual action plan on or before May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, which is the required forty-five days prior to the close of our current fiscal year. Uh, you're actually scheduled as a board to have a public hearing on May eleventh, after which, uh, staff will submit the action. after which staff will submit the action plan to HUD in time for, to meet that May fifteenth deadline. But rather than holding a public hearing on May eleventh and asking you to vote to approve the budget on that same evening, we're taking the opportunity tonight to present the C D B G Advisory Committee's recommendations well in advance of that meeting. So in that way, the board will have ample time to consider public comments and ask questions prior to your vote on May eleventh to approve the plan and the, the budget set and, uh, C D B G budget that's included along with the plan. Uh, leading up to tonight, staff advertised the availability of the annual action plan for public comment. And we also sent out notice far and wide to interested, to interested parties about the C D B G Advisory Committee recommendations. And both of these documents have been available on the planning department's webpage. And as the, the committee's recommendations were included in your package tonight. As the memo to the board highlights, the town's allocation for fiscal twenty-two is about one point three five million, which is actually a slight cut from last year. And of that amount, just under eight hundred thousand dollars was available to be allocated to projects and programs. The, as, as the chair mentioned, you serve as chair as the C D B G Advisory Committee. That committee held two public meetings via Zoom on March third and March eighth. And the role of that committee is to consider funding requests. And you use the later, the latter part of the March eighth meeting to, to vote to recommend, recommend a CDB, CDBG budget for the select board's consideration. As the committee memorandum details, there are a number of housing-related activities that were recommended for funding, including the town's affordable housing program. At a hundred thousand dollars, the BHA's resident health and safety capital projects at about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And also there was a recommendation related to the Brookline Improvement Coalition's request to, for funding to do a capital needs assessment, which would actually help them think through future capital needs at, at two of the properties that they, they own and manage. There was a Department of Public Works Accessible Pedestrian Signals Project that was recommended for funding under their community and public facilities category, and the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Again, that would provide accessible pedestrian signals at a number of locations that would allow for vision impaired pedestrians to cross safely. Business Assistance Program was recommended for funding under the Economic Development Category. I think as the board knows, a, a previous allocation was made under the CARES Act allocation to help the economic development, long-term planning staff to run a business assistance program. This additional funding would be used to augment that program and to help get funding to small businesses affected by the pandemic. And finally, a number of public services programs were funded. And with the requirement that, that the total funding for all those programs unfortunately can't exceed fifteen percent of the grant or about two hundred and two thousand dollars. That's a HUD requirement. And as much as those programs are all worthy and could use the funding, we're unfortunately constrained by that fifteen percent. Those allocations were for Brookline Community Mental Health Center for their case management program, for the Council on Aging, for the TRIPS program, the Housing Authority's Resident Services Program, Steps to Success, Works Connections for Youth Program. And it was actually a recommendation for additional COVID nineteen program for the, for programming for the Brookline Food Pantry in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Again, those funds would be utilized to augment the existing food pantry program that has received, you know, funding through the CARES Act to, to help residents with food security issues. So that's just a, a brief overview. And I'd like to conclude by saying, you know, as it happens every year, requests for C D B G funding greatly exceed the amount of funding that we have available. And the advisory committee did its best to, to make recommendations on the allocations using information gleaned from presentations made by applicants. And, you know, and also considering how those projects and programs would meet community needs. And as well, for this year, the committee considered ongoing needs resulting from the pandemic. And I think that reflects in the, in the budget recommendations. But with that, we'll be back before the select board on May eleventh for a public hearing. We wanted to give you as much review as we could about the recommendations. You know, and this isn't a public hearing, but I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that the board has related to this year's proposed C D B G program.
Okay, first of all, I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, is on the committee, is chair in matter of fact. Yeah, we did, you know, this is one of the ways our, our funds through C D B G and during COVID, C D B G C V or COVID funding. One of the ways that we've been helping the Brookline Housing Authority. And this time around, the Housing Authority had an ask of one point five million dollars. Unfortunately, we didn't have that much to give away to everyone. And we were only able to give them three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That money was, was allocated to them according to their priority list, which was first priority being mechanical bathroom fans at High Street. And then some entry replacements. And finally, their, their fourth priority was replace gas stoves at High, at High Street. You know, all of these priorities were, were important. You know, in, 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 in the best of all worlds, we could fund all of them. But that's not the world we live in. And hopefully, the three hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we did provide will be used by the Housing Authority to, to great benefit. I just want to mention the other thing we funded at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Department of Public Works, pedestrian safety. I mean, that's not just useful for, for people with sight issues or blindness. I mean, for elderly residents who may move slowly or slower than, than the rest of us. You know, the signals that will be installed in certain intersections will be very, very helpful to them in terms of letting them know, you know, how quickly they need to get across the street before it becomes dangerous. And intersections, traffic intersections are a huge problem for the elderly. It's, it's where a huge number of elderly pedestrians are killed. You know, fortunately, I don't recall that we've had any fatalities of elderly people here in Brookline, at least not recently. But, you know, nationally, that is a huge problem and we want to make sure that or this money will, will enable us to, to reduce the possibility or the probability that this, this would happen, that we'd have fatalities here in Brookline significantly. And, and I think that's very important. Any other comments, discussion? Raul.
Thanks. Um, Joe and maybe even Mel, a couple questions. So, so this fifteen percent cap on, on public services is, 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 is critical, it seems, because it, it really does limit the ability for, for us within this larger budget to direct funds to public service organizations. And, and if we, if we think that more should go, for instance, to, we've gotten a number of emails about a particular program. But if we think more should go to that program, that means we have to take it away from another public service. We can't take it away from some of the other things that are getting funded there. So let me ask you a question about, this is about the Work Connections for Youth Program through Steps to Success, which is one of those programs where there's a direct correlation between the amount of money that goes to it and the number of young people that are able to, to work through this program. It seems that some of those folks are working for the town of Brookline, but funded through C D B G funds. And I'm wondering if, if we figured out with the, the decrease in funding that we see here compared to the ask, which is around twenty thousand dollars, is that something that, does that mean either A, we're going to need to remove those positions from, I think Parks and Rec is, is at least one of the departments where that's the case. Or B, is that something that we as a town now are going to cover the funding for or something else? Do we have an answer on that yet?
I'm not aware of any other town resource. I mean, I know the program has had discussions with private employers about possibly filling the gap where C D B G funds couldn't. But I, I think you're exactly right. Unfortunately, their ability to employ employ young persons is, is directly based on how much funding is in that program. And as you also mentioned, you know, pulling funding from another program to fully fund that program means another worthy program is not getting funded. So it's, it's not an easy ask of the committee to come up with an equitable way to share the funding, but I, I, I think they, they did their best to do it.
Mel?
I, I wasn't trying to be glib when I said something else, but I, I, you know, I, I think we have to put our thinking caps on. You know, we have this federal American Recovery Plan of funds and potentially could provide flexibility to do different things. But we've, we'll, we'll think about that. We, we really do need, I keep saying it, but we really do need federal government's guidance on these A R P funds. Without it, we're just guessing.
And I'll, I'll just say that, you know, taking from another one of the public services programs to, to, to increase, you know, the funding here doesn't make any sense to me. So hopefully we can, we can find a creative solution there. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, excuse me, on the same subject, the Work Connections for Youth Program under steps to success. I had a chance to talk to a couple of people about this. And of course, there have been letters submitted to the select board, which are very good and very detailed as to the, the, the benefit that we get from that program. This is, to me, one of those, those programs that there's tremendous, excuse the expression, bang for the buck. I mean, there's just people whose, whose futures are changed for the better by this program. And seconding what my colleague, Mr. Fernandez said, yes, it, it's, the message is clear that given the limitations on service programs in this budget, that it doesn't make sense to take from one to solve the problem with another. But as Mel said, we're in a time of opportunity and, and some, some degree of uncertainty as to available federal funds that are tied to COVID relief or, or economic recovery. And I, I think that if we really sharpen our pencils and, you know, look, look real hard, we can come up with the twenty thousand dollars that they, they fell short of in the Work Connections for Youth Program. And so it doesn't have to be solved by somehow taking from another program under the C D B G budget. But I, I truly think it can be solved. And I urge, it's easy to be the person urging that, that others find the solution. But I have faith that they can find that, that money. Because it's, there's too much benefit from it to simply allow the difference of twenty thousand dollars to ma- make a very unfortunate deny a, a really significant bit of promise to the future, for the future of some young people in that program. And I, I hope that we can report on success in a few weeks from now.
Well, we may not be able to take money or have to take money from another C D B G funded program. This can come from somewhere. And, you know, the money probably goes through the school committee or the school department, which means that twenty thousand dollars is going to have to be taken from a school program. So it's not going to be that easy, but you know, hopefully, you know, we'll have some flexibility with the American Rescue Plan or other funds that may become available. But, you know, no one should think that this is, would be an easy fix. Okay, unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move approval of the.
I don't think we're voting on that.
That's right, we're not voting. Okay. We don't even have to approve this. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, and we'll see you on May eleventh.
Okay, when we will vote.
When you will. Exactly. Thank you.
Next, Community on Policing Reforms Police Department Survey Presentation. I believe that Ron Wilkinson is, and Michael Zurab are going to be presenting this to us. Well, Michael?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good to be with you.
Hello again, everybody.
Hello.
Yeah, so Michael and I will be jointly presenting survey on police department personnel. So I guess we'll start with my, should we, well, let's, why don't we just kind of say a little bit about ourselves, Michael, before we even begin?
Sure. So I'm Michael Zurab. I'm a doctoral candidate in the Department of Government at Harvard University, where a lot of my research is about the politics of policing. And I've served on the Policing Reforms Committee and the Accountability Subcommittee of that full committee, which I was the chair of. And Ron?
Okay, I'm Ron Wilkinson, thirty-plus year resident of Brookline, information technology professional. I work at Boston Children's Hospital. I've been active in racial justice initiatives, both in, at Children's Hospital and in, in the community of Brookline. It's something that I feel passionately about. And I'm looking forward to, to doing even more as I'm just beginning to really get involved in, in town politics. I hadn't done that before. I applied to be on both the Reform Committee and the Task Force Reimagining, because I see their, I see their functions as written in their charter as complementary, rather than contradictory or necessarily in opposition. One looks at near-term changes and one looks at future state where we really would like to get to. And I see the task is how do we get from here to there? And we have to require, we have to understand both ends in order to do that. So that's just my personal feeling about the situation. Next, I'd like to say that we, I also served on the Accountability Subcommittee with Michael. And one of the things I think we found important was actually a dearth of existing information about how civilians feel about the police. There have been lots of demonstrations, but we didn't have a lot of comprehensive data other than the relatively few complaints we get every year. We tried to listen to everyone who was willing to, who, who, who express real complaints. But in order to get lots more information, we devised a civilian feedback form that is now out there online. It, it enables any person who's had an interaction with the Brookline Police Department to submit online what that interaction was like, what it meant to them. It can be anonymous or they can identify themselves, depending on, on what they would like to do. They can identify the police officers involved, if that's what they would like to do. And the idea is that over time, we will get a lot more comprehensive information about civilian interactions with the police in Brookline, which I think will be very, very important going forward. That data is, will be reviewed both by the command police who, who are supposed to deal with any complaints that come up, but also by the diversity office, which will help to keep the police honest if that's necessary. And the redacted data will, will be available to the public to look at at any time. So I'm purposely promoting this right now because I think it will be very, very important going forward to, to promoting accountability in, in the Brookline Police Department and hopefully eventually trust within the community. So I just wanted to, to say that right up front.
I think they've got a hearing at eight, so let's move to the presentation and kind of, kind of get that done.
Yeah, okay. So I will share my screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen? Okay, so these are the contributors, myself and Michael Zurab did a lot of the human work. But the Personnel Subcommittee consisted of Elizabeth Childs, Bernard Green and Paul Yee. And we did get input from Janice Khan, who's on the Advisory Committee, and also the, the Police Union President and Dan O'Leary. Having that information from them was important. Okay, so why did we do the survey? Officers have an important perspective on what is working well and whether there are opportunities to improve the Brookline Police Department, especially the rank and file officers, in my opinion. Some components of department culture, such as comfort in reporting misconducts are difficult to measure without asking officers. without asking officers. We like to allow them to respond anonymously about issues that, that, that might come up. Changes to police policy and practices are more likely to be successful if they gain buy-in from the employees who are impacted. And Brookline Police Department employees likely have insight and how to improve policing. Okay, who responded? We polled 100% of the Brookline Police Department with, with this comprehensive survey monkey form. There were 103 responses. And we, we're comparing that with, with a similar survey that we sent in Newton, where they only got 44 responses, although they have a bigger department. I just want to say that that is, the 103 responses are about a little over half of the personnel in the Brookline Police Department. Fifty-three percent of the, of the employees responded, and fifty-six percent of the patrol officers responded. So that's not including the command staff and, and civilians. Okay. The respondents fell roughly in equal numbers between early career, mid-career, and later career employees, and included the perspectives of women, people of color, and employees of all ages, which we thought was, which we think is very important. It's worth saying that in a survey like, in a survey like this, there's always response bias. We don't know about the half of the people who didn't respond, but we feel that we've got some good information from the people who have responded. Okay, so as you're going to see, some of the major takeaways are morale is very low for several reasons. One is a perceived deficit in, in salaries and other working conditions. One is a perceived lack of support from town officials and elements of the community. And there are also challenges in recruit, and therefore there are challenges in recruiting high-quality and diverse personnel, however you might, you wanted to find that. Some of the areas where offices will see areas for improvement are too much emphasis on numbers-based metrics, you know, kind of filling, if you go filling kind of quotas for things. The second thing, bylaw enforcement, and where there should be alternatives to police response were appropriate. In other words, if there's something like a loud lawnmower or something like that, should it really be the police who are called to enforce something like that? And the third factor was a desire for stable leadership. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it about later, about that later, but has to do with the time it's been taking to, to re, to fill the upper ranks. Okay, so morale a perfect storm. We thought this was important. We, we've got lots and lots of, of open, of open-ended responses to survey questions. We asked for lots of comments. And what really kind of stood out among the people who responded, we don't know about the people who didn't respond, was that they really wanted to be a, a, a police officer because they thought of that as a positive service role. They wanted to give back to the community. They, they, growing up in Brookline, they wanted, it was, they thought it would be a good way to give back, a good way to help, a good, a good way to protect. That, that's where a great many of them were, were coming from, in, in very, very large numbers. So this is just a graph of morale. A good 86% thought morale was, was, was poor, and the other categories are, you know, dwarfed by that. So this, this is something we've had. If, if you've got high support and, and, and good compensation, you'll, you'll get officers who are happy to invest in the community in lots of different ways. And well, that, so that in, in some ways, that's a kind of a happy, a, a good quadrant to be in. And I, I won't go through this much. If you have low, low compensation and lousy support, you're going to lose a lot of officers. And if the idea is to recruit young, diverse officers, you, you want to have, you want to have good reasons to attract them. So. Okay, among the material working conditions, there was dissatisfaction with, with, with base pay, lack of equitable educational incentive pay. The younger people especially thought that equipment was getting old, cruisers, outdated uniforms, the conditions in the public safety building, lack of adequate fitness facilities, and adequate technology. However, interestingly enough, there, there was said, there was a high level of satisfaction expressed with training in lots of different areas, including firearms training. So whatever, whatever that worth. Okay, so you can see how people felt about compensation, everything from mediocre to, to lousy for various reasons. We'll go into that. Okay, so in terms of support, there was a perception that Brookline residents have a lukewarm opinion of the Brookline Police Department. And it was a, a very strong belief that town leadership wasn't giving them enough support. And there is the whole impact of, of the perception of police do all, due to all the horrible things that we've seen police do in, 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 in the news, very, very concerning, and an assumption that that applies to all of the police all of the time, which the police, the police not surprisingly think is unfair. Then receiving negative interactions with some members of the public, including curses and that kind of a thing. However, there was also community support, which is appreciated. So experiences influencing, influencing how they perceive community support. Sixty-one percent said in the past few months, they'd had family members disrespected because, because they had a member who worked for the police department. Eighty-four percent said they'd received verbal abuse from members of the public. On the other hand, 92%, which includes the other, other two categories, they also said that they've been thanked by members of the public. So, you know, it wasn't, it, it wasn't all bad, but it was a mixed bag. So I pretty much said, I pretty much said this, what the consequences of, of low morale are. Important, particularly how these trained officers are leaving for lateral transfers out of the department, but nobody's coming into the department. And they're, well, racial and gender diversity you want to get to in our, in our, in our upper ranks. Okay, so that's all I want to say. We'll have Michael take it from here. Michael, do you want to share your own screen, or do you want me to move forward?
Can I share my screen, Ron?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Just maybe slightly easier. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thanks, Ron. So I'm gonna focus on the second and third portions of the kind of themes we want to convey to you all from the survey. Although there's a lot of different, you know, suggestions that officers made about changes to the department. We're only going to focus on a few of them here for the purpose of time. The first has to do with numbers-based evaluation, and in particular with respect to traffic stops. Many officers objected to this strategy that they perceived was coming from the top in the department. The second area is officer frustration around suspicious persons calls that they felt happened quite frequently and were made without justification by some residents against people of color, putting police officers in a very awkward position of essentially being tools of racial profiling by citizens. And then finally, most, not all officers saw opportunities for shifting responsibilities for some calls to, to other agencies, especially enforcement certain bylaws. So on this first point, we never asked about this explicitly, but it came up again and again. Actually, this wasn't the first time that this came up. I think the second reforms committee meeting, we had two police officers from the department talk to us about their perspectives, two relatively young police officers. I think their names were William Walker and David Pilgrim. And they talked about this numbers-based policing, and that, that came up again and again in the survey and response to a variety of questions that in open-ended responses, when asked about areas where they thought the department could improve, they mentioned a numbers-based policing strategy where officers are assessed by how many tickets they write. So essentially, what they are stating, many rank-and-file officers are stating, is that they feel they are pressured to make traffic stops. Nobody was talking about quotas explicitly, but definitely that there was incentives coming from the top to try, you know, to make traffic stops, because that's how you were evaluated. And so as we're thinking about ways to, you know, make policing more equitable, I think we have to, as a community, confront whether this is how we want officers to be evaluated. There may be other metrics that are more appropriate and better reflect our values. So that's the first area that rank-and-file officers indicated they would like to see changes that we thought would, you know, also make an important difference in how policing is conducted in Brookline. The second thing that came up again and again is this issue of suspicious persons calls. So these are open-ended responses from officers in response to questions about biases in the community.
By the way, Michael, I, I don't see your slides advancing.
Ah, so.
I'm still seeing number two reforms to policing.
Well, I, I see them advancing.
Okay, fine, then I won't worry about it.
I think you're still on your, your sharing.
Uh, that, actually, uh, okay, no problem. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, great. So again and again, and these are different officers whose responses are being, you know, quoted here. And these are only samples of, you know, the kinds of responses to this. Officers reported that they were, you know, they would get calls from citizens that were essentially about people of color and especially black people, black males in particular, just existing in public spaces. You know, two black males sitting in a car, somebody calls the police, says this is suspicious. The dispatch, they, you know, the dispatcher asks what's suspicious, and they just say, well, they don't, they don't seem to belong here. And then the officers feel extremely uncomfortable having to respond to a call like this. There was a lot of frustration, especially about the fact that people making these calls often preferred to be anonymous. So officers could not even confront the people making the calls and advise them that, you know, this is not, you, you should not call the police for this reason. You really need to have a specific behavior to justify calling the police, and the mere fact of someone's presence is not enough. One person wrote a more sort of concrete way of dealing with this problem, basically saying officers should have discretion in whether they respond to these type of calls, especially if the caller wants to remain anonymous. Essentially, if they don't even, you know, they're not willing to let an officer come talk to them, then they, they shouldn't be guaranteed to get the police to come and bother a person who they basically don't want around. So here, as with, you know, the traffic enforcement, essentially, rank-and-file officers are asking for more discretion, saying that police response is being used excessively. Excessively in the sense of, you know, traffic stops being made where they did not exactly feel it was necessary to make them. And here, a police response to calls where officers did not feel that those calls were warranted and made the police appear to be biased because they were responding to calls that were essentially racially motivated. A third thing we asked about, of course, this is a big topic in the community right now. Are there some roles essentially that the police play that would be better handled by other agencies? And the vast majority of officers said yes. Essentially, the perspective, their perspective is that they're overburdened with a variety of responsibilities that they didn't ask for. And in many cases, they do feel that they are not the best response. So just to highlight, you know, one very illustrative quote, although there were many of these, that, you know, essentially, officers talk about how they receive countless calls that should be dealt with by other departments. Everything from a trash can overflowing to a tenant complaining about no heat, to people complaining about, you know, construction during the daytime being too loud. This officer said the list is essentially infinite because we're a dumping ground for any and all calls, because the default is to call the police and other town agencies refer people to us. So the police themselves, you know, we're talking a lot about reforming and reimagining policing in Brookline. The police themselves agree that there are many responsibilities that fall in their laps that they don't want. And so I think this is a real opportunity for us to make changes that are sort of win-wins for everybody, that reduce the footprint of policing and also reduce the workload of the police, where they feel they're not the best people to respond. And then I wanted to share the second quote. This was in response to a different question, but I just thought it was an interesting point, that modern policing is about being a Swiss Army knife, that they may not be the best responders in all situations. They adapt and handle many different situations well. So it's kind of an alternative perspective, and there's certainly a kind of balancing act between, we want a specialist to respond to every problem, but we also want 24/7 response. And there's kind of trade-offs between those two goals. This is a word cloud showing the kinds of calls officers wished other agencies would handle. You'll notice most prominently is the leaf blower call. But there's also snow removal, and several officers mentioned certain kinds of medical calls where they thought perhaps a police response wasn't necessary. So I, you know, this is another area where we think reforms and changes could be beneficial. And then the third thing to talk about is leadership instability. So many officers were very frustrated with the resignation of Chief Lipson, which they felt was in part due to the lack of support from other people in town government. And the lack of a permanent chief and sort of lack of stability in the department is huge for many officers. There's also a lack of opportunity for upward mobility and advancement, as kind of came up earlier. If there are no vacancies in the upper ranks, nobody gets promoted. And when there's sort of instability in those upper ranks, and there are vacant, and there are vacancies sitting unfilled in the upper ranks, that's creates lack of opportunities that could be filled. So the way things are structured now, you know, people really like the idea of vacancies in the upper ranks being filled, because it allows more officers to get promoted. And, you know, that's good, because we want mobility and advancement. And it's also good, because if we want more diversity in our upper ranks, we need to, you know, have promotions, because the diversity tends to be clustered in the lower ranks. And what tends to be happening is that many of the, you know, members of the more diverse, diverse cohort of officers are, are switching to other departments for the reasons that, that Ron mentioned. So that's a real concern. And then finally, there's a very strong preference among rank-and-file officers for an internally recruited chief of police, rather than one who is externally recruited. And there are two kind of sets of reasons for this. One is a little self-interested. It's that it creates a vacancy that trickles down the ranks. If a superintendent becomes the chief, the superintendent becomes vacant, and then that position gets filled by lieutenant, and that creates lieutenant vacancy, and then that gets filled by a sergeant, et cetera. But also, you know, people mention things like Brookline's a very complicated community, and it's good to have somebody who has roots here and knowledge of what's going on and so on. But that was a third theme that we thought it would be important for, for the select board to consider. So wrapping up, we did a survey. It yielded a large number of thoughtful responses, including really detailed free responses to open-ended questions. There were some concerning findings about, you know, working conditions and lack of support. But there's also an interest in changing policies in ways that I think synergize with a lot of town goals in terms of eliminating numbers-based evaluations and perhaps unnecessary traffic stops, limiting police response to racially motivated suspicious persons calls, and developing alternatives to police response for some calls, which, from the officer's perspective, create an overly burdensome work environment, and which often put them in kind of strange positions. Confronting people doing leaf blower work is not something officers particularly enjoy doing. And, you know, they, they see, say, room for other agencies stepping up and filling some of, taking some of those responsibilities from them. So some recommendations, and there's more of this in the report. So clearly, officers complain that their salaries are not comparable with other communities, and in fact, officers are leaving the Brookline Police Department. I believe there have been six lateral transfers in the last three years from Brookline to other departments, and there have been no transfers in, lateral transfers into the Brookline Police Department from other departments. But, you know, this is a complaint that's out there, and the town should investigate its legitimacy. Second, the select board should, you know, include the Public Safety Building in the town's capital investment plan, since officers were concerned about the conditions of the building. And finally, that the select board should direct the Police Commissioners Advisory Committee newly formed to review these results as context of recommending ongoing reforms and improvements to the BBT. I would say with particular emphasis on traffic stops and incentives to make traffic stops, as well as areas where, you know, even the police say that they're, they may not be the best people to respond. To learn more, here is a link, which will take you to the full report from this working group, as well as the redacted survey data. I would really encourage you to look at it. There's very interesting open-ended responses in particular that I think can be helpful to read. And I think that's it for us. If there's time, I'm sure we're happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Let me just say that the open-ended responses are very important. They are raw perceptions and raw views by officers. Some of them may be self-serving. That's true, but they're still very, very important information that we have to, we have to deal with. We can't ignore them, and we should figure out, you know, what we need to do to, to deal with them. I'd also like to say that you know, following up on, on, on the survey and the results, you know, we get the type of police that we're, that, that we are, that we deserve by how we treat our police officers, how the, the department is run, et cetera. And it is very important, in my opinion, if we're going to continue having what I call, and, you know, people disagree with me, a very progressive police department, that we address some of these issues. that we address some of these issues and make sure that the people who want to work here are the people who we really want for the quality that they can bring to the department. So any further discussion? Ron, Michael, thank you. Raul?
Sure, I'll just ask a question. You know, Ron, Ron, earlier you gave public comment. And one of the things you said is that, um, in your take on the results, that at least a substantial fraction of existing Brookline police personnel would be proud to serve in the kind of anti-racist, community grounded, true service and profession for all police department that you're envisioning. Well, two questions. One is, is, is where is that in the data that we just saw? Because I was curious to see that in the data, but I don't, I don't, I don't know that I saw that. And then two, the other question was, you said also you believe that they can be partners in successfully implementing an activist, human rights oriented approach to public safety if given the opportunity to do so. I'm all about that. Who's preventing them from doing that? Or what is preventing them from doing that as far as you know?
First of all, it's, this is definitely my interpretation of the data. We didn't ask those specific questions. It's my interpretation of the data, having to do with why people wanted to become police officers and what they, and especially the younger, more diverse ones. So, you know, I just say that right upfront, that, you know, that is, that was just my interpretation of the data. Number two, I don't, I don't think that police officers have had the opportunity to provide input into reforms, especially the younger ones who are, who have not achieved higher ranks yet. And I think that it would be very important to tap into those particular voices. That, that's my take on it. Also, I believe there has been a concern in the groups that have been investigating police reforms and reimagining that the input from the, from the police is inherently tainted because they have a certain amount of self-interest, which is there in the way they're perceived. But that doesn't mean that there aren't officers who are capable of seeing where problems are and have ideas about what we can do about them that are, that aren't worth listening to. And so that's where, that's where I'm coming from in that particular respect. I actually think that, and this is just, you know, this is my opinion, that if we established a group of these police officers, we would ask for volunteers and other, and other civilians in town to kind of sit down together and kind of really kind of map out some of the things we can do to implement these reimagining kinds of ideas. I think there could be surprisingly fruitful work to come out of such a group.
Thanks. So I'll just say, I think there's a real opportunity with the hiring of a new chief and I don't, I don't, I certainly am very interested in folks from, you know, doing a national search and finding, you know, a real leader that is going to be sort of an anti-racist leader of this, of this particular department and would support any and all efforts to build out that kind of orientation to our department. I think, I think certainly there's, there's work for the board and the community to do in terms of providing input and direction in the case of the board with, with what that might look like. But I would love to see from the leadership of the department, now I'm talking about, them take the lead in, in bringing in, you know, you know, building on those conversations, engaging with the community as, as the task force has recommended and more and deeper engagement with the community and, and presenting to us what they think that looks like based on their expertise in policing. And they go, you know, I'm assuming we fund them to go to conferences and to engage in, in, you know, like learn from webinars and all those kinds of things. What are the things that they think in this particular vein? Not, not just about some of the more, you know, the things that maybe need to be addressed, like the, you know, condition of the, of the public safety building or uniforms or cars and all that kind of stuff. But I, but I didn't see anything in the survey and maybe it's because they simply weren't asked. But what they think we should be doing that would make this the kind of department that you and I, I think both envisioned. The last thing I'll just say is that, um, that Ron and Michael in particular, I just appreciate that, you know, you're two guys that I think have brought the right heart and mindset to this. You know, Ron, you're, the only reason you're not in the task force because we chose your better half, Almas to be on the task force. But, um, but I just appreciate the heart y'all brought to this and where you're trying to get us, which I think is to a better place. So just want to say I appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one very, very, very small thing though. We did ask, you know, we did out, asked officers, what do you think would make the department? And it wasn't, you know, we didn't frame it in exactly the way that y'all have just described, but make, you know, the department better in terms of bias and promoting bias free policing and things like that. You know, there were a couple of not so thoughtful responses, like we're already great. But a lot of people said, you know, training, training is probably very important and we do a good job with that, but we should keep doing it. And then a very, very large number of people said body worn cameras, that this was a reform that they supported. And I mean, there's trade offs with that. Those are expensive. There's privacy issues, et cetera. But that is definitely one, one area that they, they have, they are on board with, it seems. So that's not a complete response, but it's a partial response. So, and thanks, thanks again for the kind words.
John?
I want to second Raul Fernandez's thanks and praise of these two respondents presented just now. And I just want to remind everyone that I still think that Ron and Alma's husband and wife would make a great conference committee to bring together the work of the reform committee and the, and the task, and the reexam, reimagining task force, excuse me. I think that we are at a, at a turning point for policing in this country. I think sadly, getting there involved, recognition of some really deeply embedded bad practices and racism. And it's in the headlines every day. It's in the headlines again today with, you know, terrible, terrible shooting in North Carolina. Just awful. And I think that policing is going to change because of the work of groups like the reform committee and the reimagining task force. And by the way, this is happening in every municipality all over the country, virtually every municipality and state, at the state level and at the federal level. Everybody's reexamining policing right now. So I think we'd be crazy to think that nothing's going to come of this, that there isn't going to be any change to policing as a consequence of all of this effort that's taking place simultaneously at every level of government and virtually every state in the country right now. I think the key is, will it involve police in the reform effort? Or will it not? Will it be sort of dictated and imposed from outside? Or will it be encouraged and will it grow with the participation of police as part of the process? And I think that what this survey reveals and what my own conversations with some folks from the Brookline Police Department reveals is that the potential exists within the Brookline Police Department for there to be police participation, enthusiastic participation and very smart participation in the, the future of policing and the changes that need to come to policing in this country. But we have to be willing to sort of meet, meet them sort of where they live, where they, where they work, where they exist and have the conversations with them that, that is listening on our end and listening on their end and working together on these reforms. So I just think that the work that Ron and Michael have done on this particular survey and the presentation they just made is a huge step in the right direction. Thank them very much for it. And I think the, the work should continue through the select board and through taking up some of these questions with the, with the police department. And I hope in the context of sitting down with members of the police department, especially the younger members and having conversations about all of this, I look forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Okay, so much of that will be done through the police commissioners advisory committee. So which, you know, we're getting up and going, taking applications and urge people to show up. So any further questions? Thank you, Ron and Michael. Very helpful presentation. I urge select board members and the public to read the entire report that's in our packet. Like I said, raw information, you know, take it as raw information, but take it and listen to it. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on a Warren article, just one this time. Actually, public hearing impossible vote on the following Warren article for 2021 annual town meeting. Warren Article 37, Resolution on Climate Emergency. I see, is that Maya Norton? Yep.
Thanks, everyone. My name is Maya Norton. I use she/her pronouns. I wanted to thank Bernard, John, Raul, Mel and Devin for your time, which so often goes unappreciated and unnoticed. I'm going to be as direct as possible in presenting to you, since this is the eighth meeting on this warrant article. And a lot of the, it's been strengthened so much so far that I, I hope to find favorable action with you quickly in the strength that it's drawn from the select board climate action committee and the advisory committee subcommittee on sustainability. So I'll just make a short presentation and then welcome any comments. Okay, the earth is in the midst of its sixth mass extinction event, which will cause catastrophic change that includes wildfires, heat waves, drought, flash floods, rising sea levels and extreme food shortages globally. We know that a drastic and immediate reduction of carbon emissions will help mitigate these events. We are now in a time period called peak oil. Peak oil is the idea that the, the maximum extraction point for petroleum scientists have determined is between 2019 and 2040. So at this very point in time, we are at the, every, sorry. I'm so nervous and I've been looking forward to this meeting for so long, I'm stumbling. From now on, we will now be at a decreased point for life after peak oil and all of our, all of the ways that our societies function will now have to be in a different, a different way that we have functioned until now, based on the way that we extract petroleum from the earth and our societies are designed. In the world, there are over 2,000 local governments that have declared climate emergencies in 34 countries. 28 of these communities are in Massachusetts, including the last ones being Newburyport, Northampton, Shrewsbury and Watertown that are all working on climate emergency declarations this spring. The communities that have passed climate declarations are diverse in population size and government structure. This warrant article, warrant article 37, has four specific proposals within it. The first is to declare a climate emergency with emergency response at emergency speed. The second is to create and adopt an aggressive and strategic climate crisis action plan. That plan, the warrant article asks for Brookline to achieve carbon neutrality by 2040. This is a decrease of 10 years of our current goal of 2050. To invest in public education and action for life after peak oil, including an annual climate summit modeled after the one we had in 2019 with working groups of environmental groups and individuals throughout the year and to commit to keeping the outcomes of vulnerable communities central to the plan of urgent climate mobilization. This has been worked on extensively by the SBCAC, as I mentioned, and the AC Subcommittee on Sustainability and has been approved by all at this point. It went back for a revote today and was approved by the AC Sustainability Subcommittee and is going back to AC after this. And there was three amendments that have been updated from the version that you last received. So in the first phrasing, the first be it further resolved, the words, the truth of climate change were deleted. The target in your current document, it says from 2030 was listed as an aspirational goal that has been moved to 2040 with the words aspirational taken out. So I'm sorry for my stumbling and I would welcome any questions and feedback on the article. I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Hey, never apologize for stumbling in this Zoom world and we all do it. And I've done it worse than you have.
It's not even 11 o'clock, so I have no excuse.
Okay, any discussion? So, okay, so this is not ready yet. It sounds like you're saying, go back to the advisory committee?
No, it's, it is so ready, Bernard. It went, so last week, the Select Board Climate Action Committee voted to remove the truth of, because they said they didn't want a qualifier and they voted to remove 2030, to move 2030 to 2040. So those were approved by the Subcommittee, the AC Subcommittee today, as well as removing the word aspirational. So my feeling is that, given how many subcommittees have already approved this, including the AC the first time, that it will be an easy, an easy okay by the AC tonight. It's just the timing of the meetings is a little bit out of sequence.
But one question I have is that there were a lot of changes to the recitals or the whereas clauses. And, you know, the advisory committee, I think, cut them down to, what, three or four?
So the situation is, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bernard.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, yeah, so where are we now with the recitals?
Yeah, so the first warrant article, the first version of the warrant article, the original submission was what I thought at the time was a clean submission and stated everything like straightforwardly and clearly. But when it went into Subcommittee, the responses of the Subcommittee members was that they felt that it was repetitive because even though I was presenting things in my mind as a continuation of all the excellent efforts Brookline had done so far, they felt that it read as if I were adding something on top of it. For instance, the Climate Action Summit that I suggest in, in the resolutions was not meant to be completely separate. It was ordered, it was meant to be growth on the thing that we had held before. For instance, the working groups exist now, but they're partial and they're not all functioning. So there's a lot of thing, there's a lot of growth and action that happened in 2019 when we had the first employee in Brookline devoted to climate action. And because we haven't had an employee dedicated now, we, of course, we just hired Thomas Barasso as the new Assistant Director of Sustainability Planning. But from 2019 to 2021, we didn't have anyone. And at the time that this warrant article was submitted, that was still very much in the air. So this is, all of those things are new factors. The hiring, the final hiring of this person is a new factor. And so clarification were made to the second version of the warrant article, which was much longer and had everything spelled out very clearly. This is recommended, this is recommended, here's all the background. And then the Subcommittee felt like that was way too much, so they wanted one page. So now it's one page with everything moved to the petitioner's explanation. But the essence of what of the proposal have not changed at all, except for the 2030 to 2040. All of the content is there. It's just been moved around from the warrant article to petitioner's explanation in kind of a cyclical way.
So there was a comment, I think, and I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly. I think the planning department talked about the problem with just transition framework because it was not clear what that even means. So I assume that was taken out too?
No, definitely not. The just transition framework is in there. And I, I'll just, I'll, I don't want to, with, with respect for everyone involved, I want to just explain that the just transition is a phrase that was established in the 1990s and it has been recognized by the United Nations Framework on Climate Change, the Paris Agreement, COP24, the European Union International Labor Organization and the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. So it is an established phrase and idea.
I thought the planning commissioner was saying, you know, it wasn't clear to us what it is.
So in the second AC Subcommittee on Sustainability, she did say that, Alison Steinfeld. And then in the second one, in the third committee meeting, she came back and made a statement that that she, she would herself, even though she wasn't a member of the Subcommittee, voted favorite, would vote favorable action on all of the changes for the warrant article as you're seeing now.
So I don't mean to be picky here, but is just transition, is that defined in the explanation?
Yes, it is. Would you like me to read it?
No, no, I just want to make sure it's there so that people aren't sort of left up in the air, you know, what did I just vote for? Okay, any other discussion? John? You're muted, John. See, Maya, we all have problems, and John has been doing this forever, and he's still
Thanks for, thanks for the solidarity, John.
Absolutely, Maya. But this is a public hearing, so do we have any members of the public who wanted to speak?
I want to let the Select Board have their say first.
Okay, all right. I
I usually do.
Yeah, I'll keep it very brief, which is, you know, not characteristic for me. I I think that this is the kind of resolution that we would want to be on the same page with the Advisory Committee, just because it's, you know, we're talking about an existential crisis, and I'm not sure we, you know, need to go into an argument over the wording from the floor of town meeting. I'd love to see us get together behind the the wording, so that we're all sort of on the same page at town meeting. Is, can I, can I get a clear answer as to whether this is the wording that's been approved by the Advisory Committee at this point?
Yeah, so the answer is that I was supposed to present at Select Board last week, but it ended up being around eleven o'clock at night, so it was moved to this week. So the order of presentations today was the AC Subcommittee, which met and approved the language, Select Board, and then in a few minutes after this, I will go to Advisory Committee, which is meeting now. So the Advisory Committee has not formally approved this language as a full body yet.
Okay. I don't personally see the point of getting ahead of the Advisory Committee, but I do look forward to voting on a resolution that, you know, is is a concurrent resolution of the Advisory Committee and the Select Board. But Maya, I want to thank you for your work on this, and it's not just this that you've worked on, it's the Indigenous Peoples Resolution that will be presented or the statement. So you were very, you were very kind to thank us at the beginning, and then you mentioned you've been to eight of these, and I'm thinking, I hope people at home realize what it's, what it takes to go through eight iterations of this, and you're not done yet. So so thank you for all the work you're doing on this.
Thanks so much, John. And actually, I think my statement wasn't clear enough. So the Advisory Committee already voted on the original, the last original language of this. The Select Board Climate Action Committee was the one who eliminated the language of "truth as" and changed two thousand thirty to two thousand forty, which makes it more lenient. And so the Advisory Committee, which has already voted favorable action, is going back into a revote based on the Climate Action Committee, so they have indeed voted favorable action one time on a more restricted article.
Well, I I think John's point still is valid, that we don't have the final, final version. The the other concern I have is that Heather and Nancy are not here. And Nancy is is feeling bad after a fall, and Heather is at another meeting, although she should be here, here she, here she is, right on time. But anyway, I mean, it'd be good to give Heather, of course, but also Nancy an opportunity to chime in on this.
And Nancy, I apologize, Bernard. Nancy has already heard this twice in Select Board Climate Action Committee, which I realize is not the same thing, but
Okay, so what, 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 Raul? And then we're opening up for for a public hearing, and then I want the board to tell me whether they want to vote tonight.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say I'm finding a way we could vote tonight, and then if if Nancy would like to weigh in, we can, we can vote again later. I just, um, just keep it in mind that the next time we're we're scheduled to meet isn't until, I think, May eleventh. And so at that, like, that late stage, I wouldn't want us to start messing around or tinkering or making changes that that are then gonna have to go to the Advisory Committee. I I think if we vote on, if we want to hold to May eleventh, I think that's fine by me. I just think at that point, we won't really have an option if people do want to start to make changes. I mean, we will, but I I wouldn't, I think that's ill-advised, so.
Okay, Devin, let's open up the hearing.
I'd like the board to be aware that there are four people signed up for public comment. The first is Sasha Calvert. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you unmute.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for the time to speak. My name is Sasha Calvert, as you just said, and I am a co-petitioner for this Warren article. I'm currently a junior at Brookline High School. Despite only being sixteen years old, I have watched political figures fail me time and time again in order to take effective action to mitigate the climate crisis. We simply do not have time to waste anymore. Our lives and our future depend on us all taking tangible action to combat the effects of of climate change, and it is essential that Brookline be a leader in what is already a too slow climate mitigation process. We as a town are far behind where we need to be in order to mitigate local effects of the crisis, and therefore implementing this Warren article is a crucial step of the long process we have ahead of us. We have absolutely no time to waste. By supporting this Warren article, you are supporting my future and the future of everyone else on this call. Furthermore, this Warren article seeks to support communities hit hardest by the climate crisis, sorry for this, for the text tones. Already, we have seen climate change take a disproportionate toll on Black, Latinx, and Indigenous peoples in America. We need legislation that names the discrepancies so that we may adequately prepare to fight against them. I urge favorable action on this Warren article, because if not now, when? Thank you. I yield my time to the chair.
Next person signed up for public comment is Alice Thompson. Alice, you've been promoted to a panelist, and when you unmute, your three minutes will begin.
All right, I'm a sophomore at Brookline High School, and I'm also in support of Warren Article thirty-seven. I don't have as great a speech prepared as Sasha, but I just wanted to say Warren Article thirty-seven is important to me, because I mean, to treat the situation as it is, an emergency, climate change is killing people, whether it's government, condo, and corporations causing cancer in neighborhoods of color, putting oil into Indigenous communities. Brookline is no exception, and when you examine our history and present, it's clear that the impacts of this crisis will be disproportionate. So far, Brookline has had response to the climate crisis, but I do not believe it's been adequate, and I think we are going to change that. I know this is school night, so there aren't that many people here, and I know that it's been, it's the week back from break, but there are so many people, there are so many young people involved in Brookline. I can like think of there, we had, like, you know, like, hundreds of people who might have been here and were, you know, in support of Article thirty-seven.
Person signed up for public comment is Brian Lee. Brian, you've been promoted to a panelist, and you can unmute your three minutes again.
Hi, my name is Brian Lee, and I'm a junior at Brookline High School. So as we have witnessed in the last few years, the need to address climate change crisis and environmental pollution has been more important and urgent than ever. We have seen the intense burning of forests in Australia last year, destruction of rain forests in the Amazons for a consecutive of eleven months, and wildfires right here in our country in California. In the last winter, Austin has recorded the warmest winter weekend ever since the weather record began in eighteen seventy-two. The weather, as we have witnessed, has turned to the extremes of hot and cold. These are only a miniature sample of the increase in natural disasters of flash floods, hurricanes, full ice melting that are affecting communities and ecosystem, animals and humans on the planet. The climate crisis also has increased disparities that deeply penalize communities, color, and low-income people that are not fortunate enough to live in less affected places. It is now timely to declare this climate emergency in the town of Brookline, as we have, as we are already late in our schedule to mitigate and stop the temperature increase of one point five Celsius freeze, which is a tipping point of irreversible environmental destruction, and we must speed up the pursuit to school. Many, many countries around the world have declared some emergency along with many communities in Massachusetts, and I don't see the point that we do not take this action now. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Nada Sabeva. You've been promoted to a panelist, and when you unmute, your three minutes will begin.
Hi, my name is Nada Sabeva. I'm a junior at Brookline High School. Frankly, it really worries me about the future of both this planet and our town and our involvement in the climate crisis. And so I think that if we don't take the time to take action now against the climate crisis, we will regret it greatly later. So I urge you to take into account the future of our town and future generations when acting or when voting on this Warren article. Thank you.
At this time, there are forty-six attendees, and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, what does the board like, what would the board like to do? We can vote on this tonight or hold until the eleven? Heather?
Actually, there is a third option. We could vote tonight, and we could move reconsideration if, for whatever reason, Nancy, you know, wants to go on record, but we could dispense with it tonight, and should anything happen, we can always move to reconsider.
That's always an option.
Here's another thing, I'm almost want to not say it, but you will be meeting longer than Advisory Committee, so if I go before Advisory Committee between nine and nine-thirty approximately, we will hopefully have the favorable vote of Advisory Committee before you conclude tonight.
Well, we're trying to conclude early, but yeah, that's
Just saying.
And so so I guess what what that would mean is, or what you're suggesting is that we put off the vote until the end, and then see what, see whether you're finished from the Advisory Committee at that time.
Or vote favorable action now with the understanding that if the Advisory Committee doesn't, you would reconsider.
Okay. Maybe that's the easiest thing. How about, I'll move favorable action on Warren Article thirty-seven. On favor, let's see who's here. Heather?
Hi.
Raul?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And Chair of OSI. Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Yeah, tell us if there's any changes, but
I will email Devin and update.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Oh, here's another, oh, this is not a here, you know, it is a public hearing. Recreational cannabis dispensary license, this is for, for Mission Inc. at ten twenty-four Commonwealth Avenue, and I see that looks like Mike Ross and Derek Stewart, and Andrew Thutt is here representing Mission. So please introduce yourselves and talk to me about your proposed operation on Commonwealth Avenue. I see we also have our cannabis advisor, Monique Baldwin, a lot of other people here. Tito Jackson's here, wow. Okay, who's gonna start, start off with this?
I'll start, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Select Board. My name is Mike Ross. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We're joined with a great team here. We appreciate the opportunity. I just want to apologize ahead of time for my shaggy appearance. I have my second shot is on the way, and I'll, I'll be able to go out there and clean myself up. So in any case, I do have a presentation for you where I'm going to introduce the members of the team and who's with us tonight, and just quickly walk you through what we're trying to do here, which is, which is the sighting of the cannabis establishment at ten twenty-four Commonwealth Avenue. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to share my screen.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Dynamite. Okay, so the plan is a cannabis establishment at ten twenty-four Commonwealth Avenue. Our team that's that's here, you've mentioned it, Mr. Chair, Andrew Thutt, the president of Mission, Massachusetts, Derek Stewart, who's our VP of Operations, he'll be there to answer some some more detailed questions. Carl Lookner is here, he will be the GM of the facility if we're fortunate enough to open. Lou Rico is our Director of Security. Again, my name is Mike Ross, and yes, that was Tito Jackson you saw on the call with us. He's advising us around issues of around diversity. He's got great experience with the cannabis industry. He's also a graduate of Brookline High School. So the company is Mission, Massachusetts. They are currently operating, or they are currently operating, in Georgetown, Massachusetts, where they had, where they opened as medical first, and then later opened as retail, and has has been serving the Georgetown community since August of two thousand twenty for retail. They are also open in Worcester, again, starting with medical, and then, and then, and then retail. They're also cultivating in Worcester, which means they're growing to do medical. In Massachusetts, you also have to be what's called vertically integrated. They are growing their own product, and that's occurring in Worcester. This has been a long, thorough, but good process. It's, it's been a three-year process here in Brookline. We've, we've been very engaged for a long time with your planning staff, with your line departments, with the police department, with various members of the police department. I could really, I don't want to, this is kind of a mind-numbing list, but, you know, it's, it's through all that, first of all, this thing began with with the regular meetings with the various departments and making sure that what we were doing met their high expectations. We had to have our community outreach meeting, we had to execute a host-community agreement with with Brookline. We, a zoning freeze was placed on this, because at the time, we were actually under a previous regime, so we had an A and R plan that we filed. We received our provisional CCC approval. We had the site plan review, the planning board meeting in December, January of this year, our zoning board of appeal meeting. And then, just most recently, we we met with meetings along the way with community, with Boston University, with, you know, with stakeholders. And then just more recently, we met with Dr. Jelenow from Brookline, who is the Director of Diversity, to share with Dr. Jelenow our plan to take input, to make changes of that plan, to make it stronger, to make it better. And it was a great process. And then, of course, Lieutenant Cullen, who is synonymous with with the industry, and who does a great job for Brookline, and Maria Morelli, who put up with us all along the way from planning. So that, I just kind of condensed three years in just a matter of minutes. This is the site. It's a small site. It's thirty-three hundred square feet, including both upstairs and downstairs. And there is no parking, other than two parking spaces in the rear. If you look to the right of the screen, that's kind of like a site plan there, where Commonwealth Avenue is at the top of your screen, the two side roads that are two-way, but admittedly small and just not suited to travel. So it's, you know, it's a good thing we don't have parking in the rear. We do have two parking spaces that will just be used for when we have our secure drop-off and pickup of of product, but it's not where, there's no, there's no additional parking, there's no customer parking. It's really a site where we're going to be relying on a lot of foot traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic. And and even so, if you tried to even get there and pull in front of Commonwealth Avenue, because the way technology works now, Uber and Lyft will actually redirect you to Winslow Road. You cannot get a Uber in front of our building. It diverts you automatically. So that's, that's the site. This, I'm just going to kind of walk you through the the inside of the building. A couple of things to point out. This will be a reserve ahead only operation. It's almost working like that in the industry now, anyway. Most people are ordering pretty much everything from their phone, whether it's Starbucks or, you know, wherever. But with the industry in particular, because products go in and out, because they run out of product, people really want to know what they're getting before they show up. So the industry, the customers, the patients, they are going on their phones now already, but our shop will be reserved ahead. If you try to walk in, you'll be handed a card if you don't have an appointment, you'll be asked to stop by one of the local businesses, but but you have to make an appointment. It's a, it's a hundred percent reserve ahead. Yeah, those cards that we're going to be handing to people, they're, they're shop local, they're going to encourage people to shop in the local business community in and around this immediate community. But once inside, you'll be able to, you could order, or you'll more likely pick up what you were Um, but once inside, uh, you'll be able to, you could order, um, or you'll more likely pick up what you already ordered. Um, both options are available, uh, at, um, at one of our four, uh, point of sales, uh, stations or one of the in-store kiosks if for some reason you just, you have questions, you weren't sure what to get, and someone will be there to help you make your way through it. So let me just kinda orient, orient you. This is the, that long narrow, uh, building, the, uh, the first floor. Again, the right of the building is Commonwealth Avenue and the, the, the left, I mean, the, of your screen, the left of your screen is the back of the building. The turquoise is all the public area and the, uh, the tan is, is behind the scenes. You'll walk in through, uh, a door where there, there will always be a security guard standing at that door. It's, uh, it's an alcove, so you can come right in. And again, if you, if you do have your appointment, you'll be let in. Uh, you'll walk to that tan on the right, that tan desk, uh, where you will formally show your ID. Uh, and, um, and it's a security booth and then, you know, and then you're in, you're in the space and, uh, you're most likely, you're just gonna walk straight up to the left to one of those four point of sale machines. And you're gonna pick up, uh, what it is that you came in there for. There's this behind that, those four point of sales, this kinda white, um, right there, um, in the middle, behind the point of sales are, um, our fulfillment area and the fulfillment area is, is connected through like, um, one of those, um, like a garage door, almost, uh, like a, like a, they're handing through the window, if you will. Uh, I'll, I'll show you. I think I have a better picture of it. And if, if the fulfillment area happens to run out of product, they're gonna run downstairs securely. This is all behind, uh, locked doors, uh, and they'll be able to come back up and they'll be able to, to fulfill, uh, whatever it is that, that they need. And then further back is the storeroom, the bicycle storage area, an employee bake room, a break room, a restroom, and then receiving for all our deliveries. Um, this is just a more, another version of, of what I walked you through, but I don't need to really do it again. It's the same floor. It's that first floor. Um, right there. This is the downstairs, uh, so the downstairs, that stair you see kind of in the upper left-hand corner, that connects to that fulfillment room area, um, a secure stair that you would go down, uh, if, if you worked in the facility to get additional product, or if there was a delivery, um, product would be stored down here in the vault. This is a rendering, just what it looks like. This is, this is me standing or we're standing, um, at behind those point of sale, um, terminals, looking towards the, the Commonwealth Avenue, the entrance where people will come in. Uh, this is a little closer, that Commonwealth entrance where people are coming in, uh, where they'll be checked in. Make sure they say, you know, they're twenty-one years old. You know, you all know this by now. You've seen this. This is not, this is only available to people who are twenty-one years and older. You, uh, it's not like a liquor store where you can run in and, and like grab a bag of chips if you're under the age of twenty-one. No entry without an appointment and no entry without being twenty-one or older. Um, just another, uh, rendering of, of how it's gonna look and um, here you see it's kinda been reversed. Now Commonwealth is on the left of the screen. Uh, you see that fulfillment room. Uh, what you don't see is that there's a stair, at the stairwell, but there is one, um, and it brings you downstairs. Just a, a zoomed in photo and you can kinda see the back there where, where we have indoor storage of bikes and we have a whole transient demand management program where, um, uh, we can get into it if you want, but it's a very robust program. Um, really, it's, 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 uh, it's a great program because of the paces that we've been put through, uh, uh, through the, through the, uh, through the process and we're, we're really excited about it. You know, we have an extensive security protocol. Um, you, Derek's here. You can talk a little bit more about our chief of securities here. They can, they can uh, dive into it for you. But it's, um, every square inch of this facility, uh, is, is under video surveillance. Uh, we have, uh, we have outside cameras. Um, I think you guys have, have seen this by now. We've a total of thirty cameras on the site. I wanna, I wanna pause here, um, you know, uh, diversity inclusion. We, we have, we've also been seeing a lot of the emails that have been going around recently. This is a company that takes this extremely serious. Um, they, um, they reached out to, um, they put a plan together that they're proud of and, and I wanted to have Tito Jackson kinda walk us through just the high points, uh, on this if I could.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Can every, can everyone hear, hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and this, uh, august body. Uh, my name is Tito Jackson. I am a proud, uh, graduate of, uh, Lawrence School as well as, uh, Brookline High School. Um, I had to come, uh, tonight to help, um, our Newton North graduate, Michael Ross, uh, uh, make sure that he was uh, on point, uh, tonight, but I, I, I'm sorry. Um, I actually, um, you know, good question is why, why would I be here, uh, with a large, uh, company, um, that, uh, um, is not, uh, a company of color. Um, I have been doing diversity equity, equity inclusion strategy, um, since I've left office as well as, uh, in, being in the cannabis industry. Um, and it's really critical that organizations like, uh, Mission, um, have a robust and aggressive plan around diversity, equity, inclusion. It's the only way, um, that there's actually going to be a change in the industry that has, uh, seven percent, uh, ownership of people of color. And so, um, very happy, uh, to be here. Um, and I also do wanna, um, note and give props to the equity advocates, um, in the Brookline, uh, area. Um, I appreciate the work that you do and, um, I ask that you continue, uh, to fight, uh, hard for, uh, equity and inclusion at every single level of, of this, uh, industry. Um, and so just to jump into it, um, there will be twenty-five to thirty, uh, employees. Um, we are, uh, looking at, uh, at least, and these are, by the way, these are all, uh, a floor and not a ceiling. So this is the objective here is actually, uh, to hit, um, and exceed all of these numbers. Uh, so thirty percent, uh, in, uh, our BI, BIPOC, uh, category, fifty percent for women and, um, a, a unique piece and, and, uh, very happy this was a suggestion, uh, that was accepted and, uh, uh, we are looking to, uh, work with, uh, community-based, uh, organizations, um, uh, faith-based organizations as well as reentry organizations, um, to ensure that we, uh, have twenty percent of, of, uh, the individuals who are working here, um, that have a Corey, um, and that's a criminal offense, uh, record. Um, and we also will be focusing on, uh, our, our folks in, in, uh, S W T Q I A, uh, A plus veterans as well as disability, uh, category. We want to, uh, ensure that these are things that are priorities. Um, there will be an aggressive, uh, recruitment effort, uh, in partnership and collaboration with, uh, uh, Brookline Housing Authority, um, rolling out job fairs, um, as well as, uh, sharing these, uh, posts, uh, far and wide, uh, in particular in, um, community-based, uh, and, and BIPOC, um, media, uh, radio stations, uh, well, actually, I'm sorry, we can't do radio, uh, but, uh, in, in the targeted areas, um, that we are able to, uh, to work with, uh, as well as, uh, newspapers. Um, in addition, um, one of the critical components is not only getting people of color, but, uh, retaining, uh, folks and also promoting them. And so that's a critical component. Um, everyone will have a, a performance review, uh, and, uh, there will be a dashboard actually set up in order to, uh, track, um, what it looks like, uh, literally, uh, relative to, um, BIPOC folks, um, women, uh, and, um, uh, veterans, just those in the disabled and S W T Q, uh, community, um, and how they're doing in terms of their ability to progress. Um, in addition, uh, it is absolutely, uh, critical. And as I noted, there will be a, uh, our, our going dashboard, uh, that is created to, uh, track, uh, the goals that, uh, have, have been committed to. Uh, I think it's also, uh, critical, uh, that we look at, uh, minority business enterprises. And so, uh, looking at how to partner with uh, members of the economic empowerment as well as social equity program, uh, that is run by the state, um, in order to, uh, acquire, uh, products, uh, flower, uh, manufactured, uh, products or marijuana infused, uh, products. Um, and I think there's another critical component, uh, is around services. So not only hiring people, but it, uh, making sure that we participate and connect with businesses who are actually in, uh, and, in this, in this community. Um, at this point, and, and to be very transparent, in the state of Massachusetts, we, uh, only have one, uh, black, uh, cultivator, uh, in, in a state at this time. Um, and, uh, at, at this point, um, w- we basically want to have uh, an escalator here relative to, uh, increasing, uh, the participation as capacity, uh, continues to grow in that space. Um, and then just from a community engagement, uh, side, uh, the objective is to be, uh, a very good neighbor, uh, to connect with, uh, the community, to stay present, not only get this approval, uh, but to continue, uh, to move forward. Um, I think one of the other, uh, highlights is that, um, uh, Mission is also, um, uh, working to, uh, do, uh, community engagement events, uh, in which they, uh, could possibly be, uh, cleanups or, or the like, um, in which they, uh, would, uh, deploy employees, um, out into the community, uh, to make those, uh, connections. And, um, if folks have any questions a- about this, uh, I'm more than willing to, uh, field questions after. Thank you all so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks, Tito. Not bad for a, uh, Brookline High grad. Um, the, uh, the competitive benefits here, um, are worth mentioning. Um, this is, uh, a fifteen, a minimum fifteen dollar per hour, uh, rate for our employees. We, we anticipate, I mean, there are also salaried, uh, as well, but if the hourly rate starts, uh, at fifteen dollars an hour here on Brookline and, uh, we think that that is a, uh, a great thing. Um, we have, uh, a bunch of benefits that are, um, uh, a robust package. I mean, our employee, uh, health insurance is covering eighty-five percent, uh, which we think is, uh, generous and above what we're seeing in the industry. Um, and, uh, you know, we want it to be a great place to work. We know there's a lot of competition out there right now to hire qualified people in this industry and we want them to work with us. That went fast. Um, that's really it. We just kinda wanted to put some, uh, some data up on the board and, uh, maybe stimulate, uh, the, you know, question answer, which we think is the most important part. So I'll, I'll stop, uh, sharing the screen and appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, um, I'd like to start off with a couple of questions. Uh, as Chair, I can do that. Um, I, I, I appreciate the fact that, uh, Tito Jackson, who, um, you know, is a credible person in, in this area, is doing your diversity work and, and that's very important and he has some very good ideas. Um, you know, I, I mentioned one, uh, twenty percent cannabis-related Corey employees. I hope you expand it beyond cannabis-related, uh, quarries, uh, because, uh, hiring of, uh, ex-offenders is a huge problem in this country, particularly, um, because many of the ex-offenders are there for reasons that aren't really, uh, justifiable. Um, but you know, uh, I, 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 I say this to all the companies that come before us. Um, it's nice to have a diversity program, but it's sort of undercut by the fact that, that you're not a diverse ownership group. Um, and, yeah, I noticed that, uh, all the principles in this organization are from the financial service or have ties to the financial services industry where they should have, uh, been able to develop, uh, social contacts, business contacts, professional contacts with, uh, people of color who they could recruit into, uh, the organization of, of a business like this. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this to put it on your radar screen. Um, I, I really do not like the fact, and this was an issue when I was, uh, uh, a transaction lawyer for, for the state. I don't like the fact that companies come in and say, and talk about diversity, but they're an all-white company. Um, there's just a problem there. And, you know, given, you know, the connections you guys had, uh, coming in, there's just no, uh, justification. So, you know, I guess my, my reason for saying that is to get your reaction and, 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 you know, tell me and look and persuasively tell me that, uh, this, this is an issue that you're, you're going to address. And then we'll see if you do.
Yeah. Well, I guess I would say a couple of things. First thing I would say that this has come to us loudly and clearly, uh, from Brookline, uh, from the select board, but from the staff, from the line, uh, you know, staff departments as well. This is something that was made very clear and it's why we've brought in Tito Jackson to help us. It's why we put together a robust plan. Um, it's, it's not enough just to open, to be very successful, to be the best in the business. Um, you need to do a lot more and certainly, uh, the diversity piece has been made very clear to us and that's why we've invested a lot of time and energy in that. The mere fact that, that the industry doesn't allow for banking has made it very difficult to get away from, say, the finance piece because what the industry forces because of the illegal, the illegality of it at the federal level is it forces, uh, people to go out and find investors. Um, and those investors aren't banks. They're not community banks. They're not credit unions. They're not local community institutions. They're, they're individuals who have access to high net worth. And so I think that's why you are seeing a lot of people, uh, in the industry. You know, that being said, we're not satisfied, uh, with, uh, being seen as an, an all-white, uh, team. Uh, we have some, um, diversity, uh, in the company at some higher levels, uh, and we have an effort to try to make our company even more diverse. The employment data that, uh, Tito Jackson put out there said that a minimum of thirty percent of our employees are going to be, um, from communities of color, um, and that's a commitment we're making and we have to come back to this board six months from now. And we have to show you what did we do? Did we live up to what we're saying right now today? Uh, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, uh, Tito, or if you wanna hear from others.
Um, M- Mr. Chair, um, I think I, I have actually committed a, a great deal of, uh, my career to the issue, uh, and topic that you're, uh, speaking about. And I think, um, one, uh, one of the efforts, um, has been, uh, reaching out and, uh, I, I will, I will note, um, that, you know, there was a, uh, outreach, um, around this issue and, and, um, as I noted before, um, this is a, is a topic, an issue, um, that's absolutely critical. Um, I think, uh, at this point, um, taking an aggressive, uh, approach around, uh, hiring as well as aggressive approach around, uh, the inclusion of minority business, uh, enterprises, um, is, uh, a step. Um, I think, uh, to your point, um, the objective, uh, would be to, to see, uh, future steps and, and how, uh, we can get uh, more, uh, components around this issue, uh, of, uh, of ownership, um, and equity and, and, in this space and, and equity in the business term, uh, not only, um, relative to, uh, uh, people of color. Um, so, uh, I, I will, I, I think it is incumbent also, uh, uh, upon me, um, and being here tonight, uh, to continue to work to ensure that the components of, uh, this plan, um, are actually enforced. Um, and, um, uh, I will continue to walk, uh, Mission through, uh, to ensure, um, that I am, I, I sat, uh, Mr., Mr. Chair in, in a chair that probably was not as nice as yours, um, but
I'm sure it was much nicer.
No, and, and I, I, I've, I've, I've seen, um, uh, the, the, the select board and y'all don't play when it comes to these issues. And, um, I don't plan on, uh, biting my tongue or playing when it comes to, uh, being able to deliver, um, in, in, in six months. That is absolutely Mission critical.
Okay. I, I, I'd like to see a plan to, uh, uh, expand ownership, um, and we should ask this of all the companies. I mean, you know, no guarantee they'll be successful in six months, but what is the plan? You know, who are you approaching? Who are you looking, you know, I mean, what, 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 uh, sectors, industry sectors? You know, you're gonna find, uh, black owners who, or black individuals with the money to, uh, invest, who would wanna invest in, in the cannabis company? So I, yeah, I, I think a plan to talk up to, to address the ownership, uh, issue would be very, very helpful, um, and, and a good step forward. Uh, any other questions from the select board? Or from Monique? I see, wait, Ra- Raoul has a question.
Good, thanks, Bernard. Um, yeah, a couple of things on this. Um, first of all, um, hi to Mike Ross and Tito Jackson. Mike, I remember, remember you and I used to live in Mission Hill, having your office hours over at Mike's Donuts, uh, as a state rep and then, and then Tito, um, you're obviously well-known in Brookline, but I also remember sitting in the city council chambers in Boston after you'd subpoenaed President Brown at Boston University to come could, because he wouldn't show up willingly to talk about exactly what BU was gonna be doing about diversity and inclusion. So anyway, I know you guys will, I appreciate y'all being part of this and you, you obviously add, uh, a, a greater level of credibility than, than would otherwise be here. Um, you know, I, I think two things. One is, is we have to take responsibility as a community, um, for our own inaction in not setting aside social equity, uh, licenses for social equity applicants when we initially, um, created, um, you know, these, um, you know, uh, these licenses that we have in Brookline. I do think we have an opportunity to do something about that moving forward. I was talking with Monique, Monique Baldwin about that earlier today. And so I'm hoping that we as a community, if we're, if we're as serious as we say we are about, um, about having diverse leadership in the, in the cannabis industry within Brookline, um, that we actually take steps to make that happen now, even though we didn't do that, um, earlier on. I, one of my questions is One of my questions is from Mike and Tito. Are you all going to be around after the opening? Is this, is your role sort of during the licensing period? Will you be around afterwards? And what is going to be our access to communicate with you about these issues that we're talking about today?
Well, let me all start if I can, and let me just say, Member Fernandez, you landed quite nicely. Congratulations. I'm glad to see you. I'm glad to see you where you are. I can represent that the company has retained Tito for, I believe it was either six months or a year. I think it was a year. And he will be the person coming back six months from now to deliver the report. He will be working with the company to actually create the plan that the chair mentioned. We did submit a plan. There is a diversity plan that's included. It's been enhanced tonight by the representations we're making with the actual numbers. The presentation tonight is considered part of our submittal and part of the package. But there will be further work done here in this space to get that, say, cannabis operator in Western Mass that Tito mentioned, or some other spend in that regard. For myself, you know, once the lawyer gets you through the burning stage, you wait by your phone and you hope they call you again. I can tell you that it's been great working with this company. The people behind this company are terrific, and it's been a great opportunity. So I think we'll have a long relationship. And, you know, knock on wood, they feel the same way about me. I do want to just address what you said about starting the process and adding some components to this. Back in slide three or four, I mean, that was a three-year process, you know? So I read a lot of the emails that came out. I feel for those emails. I agree with Tito. We're on the same side of trying to create more equity. But even if, let's say, we had a magic wand and we were to not get this license, it's not like someone can just come in and take it. They would have to start from square one, and they would have to go through those, you know? Maybe it's not three years now. Maybe it's two years, two and a half years, but it would take some time. We are ready to get open. We want to get producing, creating tax revenue, creating three percent for this town, creating jobs. We're ready to do it. We're ready to go. And that's a unique situation to be in, that I don't think anyone else can be in without having gone through those steps. I hope I answered the question, Tito.
And Member Fernandez, you have landed well in spite of who you used to hang out with. It is said that you are the average of your five closest friends. So I'm really happy that you have five better friends than us. But what I would say, I, it was contingent in my contract that I know what it feels like to be in that role, and it would be wrong to step forward and then not be there to do the implementation part. So I am dedicated to deal with the implementation. You know, I quote the twenty-first century poet and scholar, Mike Tyson, when he says, you know, "Everybody has a plan until they get hit in the face." And so I think it's absolutely important that the implementation plan happens. I would give some unsolicited advice. There are, as recent as a month ago, Brockton increased the number of HCAs. And they did it to ensure, one, that they didn't get into a legal battle. And again, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV, but that they didn't get into a legal battle. And they were able to ensure, and actually literally tonight, a company called Tarasol, which is a black-owned company out in, a friend of mine named Ian Woods, he actually received his license tonight. And that occurred because there was an increase in the number of HCAs. So again, I'm not here to tell this very qualified board on what to do, but it is possible, looking at what's happened in Cambridge, also looking at what happened in the city of Boston, where there was actually an ordinance that set aside a specific amount. It's a one-for-one, and literally, they will not allow you to, and Mike deals with this all the time. If there is a, if there is not an equity person available, meaning ready, they won't have the meeting. They literally are one-for-one in that. And in Boston, obviously, there's going to be a larger number. There's going to be fifty-two. So, Member Fernandez, I, again, completely unsolicited, but there is precedent in municipal bodies to do that, and actually to also, at times, to actually provide funding to help. And that usually comes from the tax assessment that comes along with it.
Is that co-ventures or vendors, or are we talking about equity partners?
These are, in the city of Boston, there's a requirement that it's fifty-one percent ownership, at least fifty-one percent. In addition, the individuals, it's not everybody, right? So it's people who are under two-hundred percent AMI, individuals who live in an area that we refer to as disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, and individuals who have a family member or themselves who have been caught up in the racist war on drugs.
So, no, I think that's very important, but I'd like to, and I apologize to the rest of the board, but let me just make this request. With respect to the ownership of the company issue, I'd like to get, and I'm not saying that tomorrow you have to have, you know, black or Hispanic owners, but, you know, there has to be a plan. It has to be a serious plan. I want the owners of the company who are here tonight to indicate whether they are willing to pursue that, willing to go along with, you know, developing such a plan and acting on it.
Mr. Chairman, it's Andrew Toot. I'm the president and the principal owner of Mission. Thank you for having us. Just for a little bit of context, you know, our company very much came out of, you know, the social justice realm. One of my partners, Chris Crane, was, you know, one of the former directors of, deputy director of Normal, founder of Students for Sensible Drug Policy. And, you know, we've been very advocacy-oriented throughout our history. And we've spent a lot of time here in the Massachusetts. I actually live here in the state, as did Chris. And, you know, we actually had, the legalization effort was run out of our offices in downtown Boston. So we are very open to, you know, increasing the diversity of our ownership group. And, you know, that's why we've taken steps like bringing Tito on board. You know, we are not perfect. We're always a work in progress. But did want to point out that, you know, we definitely come from an advocacy background where we fully recognize, you know, the issues of diversity that need to be addressed in this industry.
I just wanted to follow up on the previous line and just say briefly, if others want to say something, I'll give you an opportunity. Just, I would just say this, is that, you know, I personally feel a whole lot more comfortable if you had Tito on, if he's willing, or someone very much like him to stay on and push this work forward. I'm deeply uncomfortable with plans that look very good and then are sort of like, okay, now take it away. Good luck, guys. And I don't feel a whole lot of confidence that those plans will reach fruition. I'd be much more comfortable if there was, in particular, Tito, because of the credibility he brings and the, you know, the genuine care and passion that he has for issues like this. And his own credibility is on the line, of course, too. If he or somebody on his team were to remain on to see this plan through, maybe through the extent of the HCA at a minimum, which is those five years. So I'll just put that out there.
And this is Derek Stewart. Hi, everybody. I'm the VP of Retail Operations for Mission Mass, also a Massachusetts resident. I grew up in Georgetown. I was the very first retail associate ever hired at our Georgetown store and cultivation facility. And, you know, now almost five years later, I've seen a lot of changes in the company. And one thing to bring up on the point of ownership is that now with the company that we're currently under, there is a lot of opportunity for employee ownership within the company. Stock options are available for anyone who wants to put their best foot forward and work towards a common goal. In working with Tito over the last month or so, we've learned a lot as a company, and his advice has really helped us shape what our diversity plan looks like just tonight. But that doesn't mean that it stops here, because we, as a company, need to be accountable for everything that we not only put in front of the board, but to the communities that we operate in. So what we're really looking to do is not just focus our efforts here in Brookline, but we want to take what we learn and what we see works and how we can make a better impact, not just here, but in all the communities that we operate in. It is a top priority of ours to make sure, and as Andrew Toot had mentioned, you know, we're rooted in advocacy, cannabis advocacy, and making sure that we're doing our best to right the wrongs of the drug war. This has been something that's been going on for decades, and we want to leave our footprint on that change and make it a positive one. But I'm really looking forward to working with Tito, and Tito, thank you again for joining us tonight. It's really eye-opening, especially talking with someone like Tito, seeing everything that goes on in the community of Brookline, as well as all the surrounding. But these are things that we can take, we can learn from, we can implement, we can develop, and just continually, sorry, continually grow this plan and make sure that we are hitting our targets. But I appreciate the time here.
Okay. By the way, this is a public hearing, and we have a lot of people in our queue. So unless there's something really important from other board members, I'd like to open up the hearing. And afterwards, you know, board members, you know, can speak. And Monique can speak, yeah. So, go ahead, Devin.
I do want to make the board aware that we have eight people signed up for public comment. The first person signed up for comment is Jonathan Lau. Jonathan, you've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're unmuted, and you can share your video if you're comfortable.
Good evening, select board members and people in attendance. My name is Jonathan Lau. I am married with two small children that will attend Brookline schools. This is my little daughter, Janessa. I am a minority small business owner that has a lease at ten-twenty-six Comat, right next to Forefront Mission. With two licenses already lined up and running, it is time to take action for those who have been harmed the most by the war on drugs. I have been arrested multiple times for possession of Class D cannabis with no convictions. My brother has also been arrested for a measly four ounces of cannabis back in two thousand and five. To this day, a certain Brookline police detective still reminds me of my brother's arrest using aggressive language and threatening language towards me. My family has been harmed by the war on drugs. Have we not learned a lesson with NEDA and Sanctuary that we can no longer allow these out-of-state operators into our town and disrespect our town residents and employees? Forefront is the biggest multi-state operator there is. They operate in five states. They already have two places in Massachusetts. They can go somewhere else. As select board members, I am urging you to consider freezing and stopping any cannabis licensing until the town can come up with an ordinance. The city of Cambridge froze all licensing and created a two-year exclusive period for minority business owners, social equity and economic empowerment applicants. Brookline is not on the disproportionate impacted list, but arrest numbers show otherwise. The time for racial justice and equality for all is now. I would like the select board members to know that I have over one thousand signatures in support of J. Lau and Co. Three hundred of those signatures are residents of Brookline. That means over three hundred of Brookline residents support J. Lau and Co. over Forefront Mission. Has the select board ever witnessed this much opposition to an out-of-towner and so much support for a Brookline resident? We need to freeze all licensing for two years until minority applicants have been approved. The time for change is now. I yield my time to the chair.
The next person signed up for public comment is Danelle O'Neil. Danelle, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening, everyone. Peace be with you. So, I, I'm gonna start off by saying, nine eleven, two thousand and seventeen, I said this before, I walked down Beacon Street to the State House, one aspirant place to figure out how can the town help minority residents benefit from marijuana, from marijuana revenue. I'm gonna be brief, because I know a lot of people want to speak on this. I spoke with Tito earlier. Tito gave me a call earlier. I told him I would say this, so he knows. You know, I know Tito a long time, and I appreciate what he's doing and helping, you know, you know, get this company or try to help this company get going. The bottom line is, Brookline has minority residents who are ready and able to open up in that same location. I just don't see it, it's equitable to have Mission come in and take that opportunity away from a minority resident in town who's done outreach, who's been to Eggmark, who's talked to folks about, you know, job opportunities. So, you know, I'm gonna be brief. You know, y'all know what to do. I hope you do. You know, I want to say peace and love to Gerald as well. That's a little bit of justice. Y'all can show some real justice and here now, and holding off on letting any other applicant get their license. I mean, you can give back this special license application fee. It was like five hundred and fifty bucks, six hundred bucks. Give that back to them. Have them move over to Cooley's Corner, or something like that. But I feel, I don't want to, we shouldn't waste this opportunity and giving someone from this town, minority, a real opportunity, not any crumbs. Not that carrier business, that's all crumbs. I'm gonna say it now. Especially with the whole cap proposal. That's all crumbs. So to be really equitable, to be a part of the real pie, it's only fair for a minority candidate to be, to be a part of the pie, to get a piece of that real pie and to contribute back to his community. All right. Thank you, Devin. I'm gonna yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Arthur Conquest. Arthur, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening, everyone. Arthur Conquest. I think we have to stop with the charades. I don't think, let's stop with the charades and give people, especially black, Latino, and Asian people in this community, an opportunity to obtain what they think is the American dream. All right? And that means some kind of ownership in whatever endeavors they're involved with. I'm not, I don't indulge in drugs in any way, shape, fashion, or form. I don't smoke marijuana. I don't snore cocaine. I don't drink. Okay? The woman who owns or who's the manager of the marijuana shop on Route Nine had the gall to once asked me that I want a job as a security guard in that company. Arthur, let's start taking care of people from our community. Let's deal with people who have not had a chance to be a part of this system. And I think that we should cut out, okay, bringing in outsiders. I say give them a chance, but I think that people... people from the community, homegrown, should have a preference. And if they stumble, let's help them make their way into the American dream. There's too much of the, this process of bringing in outsiders who paint the rosy picture to get in and then wind up letting us down. I hear stories about, it was, I think,
You have thirty seconds.
It was about two weeks ago that there was a black woman who was the manager of the store on Route Nine who was let go because of a company policy. Let's start hiring people right from our community. And when I say people, I mean black, Latinx, Asian and Native American people from our community. And I have nothing against the company that is applying, but let's help our own first. Excuse me, thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Adia Genucci. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
Yeah, no video, just, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And as usual, what up, what up, Raul? Looking better. How's the baby doing with family? Hope you guys are doing well. And I just would like to start by saying, like everyone, it's good to see Gerald Austin get his justice. And I hope some of us get to get our justice. I don't know if Forefront know about we. I'm one of the people of color that been, a person of color in Brookline as a resident that has been affected by promises of diversity plan. I used to be Sanctuary Lead Manager. And I was fired and terminated illegally just as Kim Napoli was by NEDA and just as Brian Matthew from Sanctuary is going through same thing right now. So I'll start with saying, let us say as Brooklinean, to address racial equity, let's give one of our own and put him as priority over the outsiders who already have over 50% of the license right now. And I'm sorry to say, Mr. Rose, you've not done enough to convince us as people of color in this Brookline community. And I'm afraid it's too late. Because one of ours has, one of our own got his own location and we take care of our own in Brookline. It's a community out here. As you can see, J. Lau already have over a thousand signatures and more than three hundred residents. Matter of fact, I got forty from my neighborhood today and counting, they already support J. Lau Co. For the mess others have created, we can afford to wait another two years to get it right. Because if you one of our own, John can't go nowhere. He leaves here, he's born and raised here. And to tell us that because you guys are primed to go and ready to go now and kind of telling us the profit of our own residents' life, I kind of consider that personally an insult. Just forget advocacy background for minorities. I'm a person of color. I got families that have been affected. The minority applicant has been affected. It's a lot of black and brown stories that we know that. And you guys, I hope the select board can see the support today just from residents and will keep continuing to get more support. We don't want no more outsiders. We want to help our own, the community. We take care of ours. NEDA and Sanctuary have done enough damage to this town. Let's not keep having moderate Austin situations. So I support J. Lau and Co. And like most residents, we don't want Forefront here. And we speak in numbers and the numbers we continue to grow. We can guarantee 70% of J. Lau will be minority. He's a minority himself. Don't care about 30%. We want more jobs for our people from the minority community. So I'll yield my time to my brother speaking tonight. But I urge the select board to this time, listen to us residents. You've never seen support like this, not for any dispensary applicant ever, because this is one of ours. And we will continue to show support in numbers. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Ty. You've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable. Your three minutes will begin.
All right, good to know everybody. Ty Payne, one of the other brothers that's a member of the POC Commission here. Just want to add on to what Addie said, Danelle O'Neal and John Lau also said in regards to halting the people trying to come through with their cannabis shop and everything. I feel like John Lau would also be, other than him being a person of color and having, being the first person to have a shop in this town, he's also a role model to the kids that he builds with in this town also. So I just think it's important for a person that would be an example and also would have a, who would also provide a blueprint to the youth to one day get off the corners, if that's what they would be doing, and talk to him and aspire to have their own legal cannabis shopping thing. So there's a lot of reasons why we support our own people from the town. And we're surrounded by people that just come to this town and take over and just build things and never kick nothing back and just sit there and talk about all that. So we don't need no more of that. And, you know, the fact that they had to go get Tito Jackson and all that and they didn't know that from the beginning says a lot itself. So we are the people, so we don't have to go get people and have a plan. We are the plan as well as the people that have everything ready to go. So that's all I wanted to say. And, yeah, we all said with them people, they can go to the South End and set up across from where they knocked down Harriet's Subman House and go set up right there, you know? Tito Jackson, he probably helped with that. So peace and love, everybody. But we all said.
The next person signed up for public comment is Brian Matthews. Brian, you've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable. Your three minutes will begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. First of all, good evening, everyone. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and members as well for giving me this opportunity to speak in this setting. I moved my family to Brookline in 1986. I went to Driscoll School and graduated from Brookline High School as well. I've been personally affected by the war on drugs and I'm actually thrilled that we reached this point in time where people of color are no longer being targeted or even in a position to have a piece of the pie, as we say. However, what good is that if we still get overlooked and marginalized? I actually support John Lau, a person of color who has committed himself to this town and has chosen Brookline to raise his children, just like I have. I definitely connect with him on many levels and I see that there seems to be a situation where we keep kicking the can down the road. I think that this is a great opportunity to fulfill obligations where people of color can grow and achieve their goals of being ownership as everyone else is, the same goals to do. I think that we are in a good time, not only in terms of history and in this nation as we see so many events have occurred recently and our ears are open to hear so many discussions that were kind of pushed and marginalized before. But now we have a chance to someone who has dedicated himself to this town who has pride and committed himself to raising, you know, our situation to be able to have a good community that we're all building here. I've lived here a long time and I definitely feel as though we have an opportunity to do something strong for this town. I think we have made strides on so many levels, not just Brookline, but Massachusetts. You know, in terms of what this nation has moved forward and we're very progressive. And I think this is a great time to be even more progressive and push a candidate such as John Lau into a position or at least look closely at the situation, what we're doing here instead of just kicking the can down the road once in more time. And thank you again for letting me speak. I appreciate you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Deborah Brown. Deborah, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
I think I'm frozen.
We've got you.
Okay, so my name is Deborah Brown. I'm a town meeting member here in Brookline. And I am going to urge select board to carefully listen to what John Lau, Danelle, as a conquest, Adie, Ty Payne and Brian Matthews are saying. Honestly, I've seen Mr. Lau around at events and talking about issues impacting the community, impacting people of color. And as I, you know, honestly, I listened to Forefront's presentation. You've been around for five years and you're acting like you've never, you've never seen a diversity plan? I'm actually insulted because by now you should figure it out. Mr. Thut, you talk about being a social justice guy. You come out of Black Rock. Black Rock. I mean, talk about an institutional investor. I feel like you're trying to kid a kidder. Where are the institutional benefits for people of color? I hear 30% employment. How many of those are at the senior management level? What controls do you have in place to ensure that those numbers are met? Are there ties to the diversity goals with bonuses for senior management? I doubt it. How engaged are you with BECA? And that's, that's an area minority business program. I don't see a community engagement plan. I don't see a community engagement plan because only a handful of people have any experience with you. I mean, I get out and about and, you know, people in Bridge, I'm sure they're not familiar with who you are and there are other groups in town that I dare say that you haven't engaged with. Do you have a reparations plan? Some companies are actually being pushed to develop those. If you call yourself a good neighbor, somebody that really wants to do business here and actually acknowledge the impact of the war on, that the war on drugs has had on people of color, you would have a reparations plan. Ownership? You don't have an ownership plan. You don't have one and you won't have one.
You have thirty seconds.
So, I mean, if you can't come in with an ownership plan, then you're telling me after five years you have no intention of having one. Deny the permit. Try to increase ownership among people of color. This is, this, I mean, this will be round three for being hoodwinked. But this is the grand poopa. When I saw Black Rock, I was too done. So if you're serious about working in this community with people of color and providing real benefits, you've gotten off to a horrible, horrible start. Thank you.
At this time, there are thirty-eight attendees and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
I do want to make the chair aware that there is a hand raised in the attendee list.
Okay, let them speak.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lau. I'm the brother of Jonathan Lau. Obviously, I would like for the board to prioritize my brother. But as a lifelong Brookline resident, as someone who's really understood the impact of marijuana on people of color and how it affects their lives and their families, I think that the town should prioritize this opportunity for a member of its own. If you look at most other sales or distribution of controlled substances, whether it be alcohol, tobacco or prescription opiates, for the most part, these companies are run and financed by very affluent individuals who are Caucasian. And obviously, as you trickle down the ladder, there are people of color eventually. But I think that we should preserve this opportunity and prioritize an individual from our own town who's homegrown, that actually has roots here. And, you know, he's not just an outsider with a lot of money trying to plant a stake and basically make money off the rest of the community. He's someone who's lived his whole life here and he genuinely cares about the people that he can employ and serve and just positively impact the community as a whole. And I think we should preserve that chance for him. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Bonnie Bastian. Bonnie, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
Hey, everybody. This is Bonnie Bastian, Town Meeting Member in Precinct Five. I want to lift up all these voices and fall in behind the voices in support of John Lau and leaving room for people of color in these licenses. We know already how these things work. The people with money are not black and people of color own businesses in this moment. So it's upon, it's our responsibility to take action to make sure that we leave room for these businesses because if we passively let people move into these positions, it's all going to be white owned and what will be left are the crumbs, which are $15 an hour jobs. And that's not enough. And as a medical cannabis consumer, I have to concur that, you know, we have enough white-owned companies and to be honest, the ones that we have here, I am embarrassed to purchase cannabis from because there are more and more horrible stories of them coming out in the news about how employees are treated, et cetera. And I will drive out of town to purchase my products because it's embarrassing. So let's, let's support John Lau and other black and POC-owned businesses, please. It's our responsibility. Thank you.
Is that the last person in the queue, Devin?
Yes.
Okay, so any comments, questions from the select board? Okay, I see that Michael Ross wants to speak.
Might have seen one of the select board, I thought, member Ben Sack might have raised his hand. I don't want to step in front of Mr. Chair.
Okay, John, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you, Mike. So I had a question. I don't know if it's for the chair or maybe Monique or maybe Mel or maybe all three. How many licenses are left for Brookline to give out after this one?
One.
Just one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Town meeting set it at maximum four.
Yeah. I'll keep it short. I won't vote to approve this tonight and I will suggest that we need to pause because I think, I think all of the questions that are being raised tonight are questions that need to be answered. And I think that we are running out of opportunities to respond meaning, in a meaningful way, to the questions that have been raised. And we will be limiting our opportunities by one more if we approve this tonight. So I'm going to vote, I don't know if it'll be offered as a motion, if not, I'll offer it as a motion, which is that we do not vote to approve tonight, but hold off until we've had a chance to do a review of the opportunities that exist to use the remaining licenses to address some of these concerns being raised tonight.
Okay, can we, Monique, would you like to sort of update us on the work you're doing?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. So recently, I have been tasked with communicating with various communities, Somerville, Cambridge, Medford, I just had a call this afternoon regarding, you know, what options exist for us at this particular point. And, you know, Raul is correct, you know, it is possible to raise our cap. I think that we should be mindful of, if we were to raise our cap, we would obviously want a mechanism in place for these economic empowerment applicants and minority applicants. However, we just want to make sure that there are no, you know, unintended consequences for whatever, for the rest of the license types that we have. Additionally, I have been, you know, taking a look at just some of the existing barriers to entry that we have. And in my personal opinion, the way that our HCAs are constructed, requiring an initial deposit of $100,000 before opening, just seems a little unreasonable to ask of, you know, someone, of an applicant without deep pockets. So what I can say to you is that I'm, you know, in the middle of doing research. I don't have, you know, all the answers and all of the different avenues right now, but this is obviously important to the town and myself included. And, yeah, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
So raising the cap is not something that we can do. I mean, that's town meeting. Yeah, so, so that's sort of out of the picture. Michael, you want to?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair. Look, I just wanted to, if I could just frame this a little bit. This is not a vote between whether or not Mission, Massachusetts, Mission Massachusetts is going to go forward tonight or whether, whether or not Mr. Lau is going to go forward tonight. It's, it's a vote on whether or not Mission Massachusetts will go forward or whether we will not go forward. And as Monique alluded to, you know, you're now looking at some of the regulations and maybe how can you tweak it? How can you change it? How can you make it a stronger package to allow for greater diversity? Including an up to and including maybe lifting the cap. But, but this, this company did what it was asked to do. This company met the regulations head on. It went through every single step in the process. What they were being tasked with were operational questions, security questions, very detailed questions for three years. And now at the end, they're being told that they should have had an ownership component to that. None of that is in the regulations. The things they're being asked to right now consider is, and they agree with these things. This is a progressive company. Even Boston and Cambridge and Somerville, who, who, who have these progressive regimes in place, have let in large multi-state operators because they understand that they are part of the ecosystem. I think you have an opportunity here to bring in other, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, but I just would ask, you know, if it, if, if it should, if it should come at the expense of a, a, a company that did what he was asked to, do, do, did what it was asked to do at every step of the way. Because now there's been some very warranted and, and important discussion around this issue of diversity.
And by the way, let me just be clear. I wasn't saying that ownership is a criteria for, you know, my vote on your license. I just want to make that, or put that on your radar screen and give us a plan for addressing it over a period of time. So.
Yeah, no, I, I know. I didn't mean to say, that was not targeted at you. It was a general, general comment. Yeah, and I'm sorry. The, the company, but, but what you're hearing from this company, though, I mean, the good news here, the silver lining, I guess, is they're, they're saying, yes, yes, we agree. We, we've brought, we're, we're going to do a course correction, just like Brookline's going to do a course correction. We're going to figure out how to hit your goals with you. That's what they said tonight and they will do so and they have the resources to do it. This is a, this is a company that does have those resources. They can make this happen. They will work with you in that, in that effort. So we are not rejecting the call for diverse. I just want to point out as, as, as the lawyer, you know, going through this process, it, it wouldn't be fair to now judge them based on a criteria that wasn't part of the process leading up to it. Even though they've already said to you, they're going to do it. They're going to work with you.
Yeah, I, I, I think the other question is whether we can just stop the process now in order to let someone in, in line who I don't believe has had the community meeting yet or signed an HCA or host community agreement or done any of the other steps that are foundation for us even considering someone to get one of our licenses.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So up until this point, it has been first come, first served. That is what we have been telling all applicants. So Mission is next in line.
And has, has anyone else had the community meeting or signed an HCA agreement?
We do have one other retailer that should be. No, nope. This is Conavcana. They, they have gone through their site plan review. They have gone through their zoning. They have received a special permit and so they should be actually applying to, you know, licensure next week. And so, I mean, at this particular point, when I do have applicants that are calling me, you know, I just, I, I don't discourage them from applying. However, there's no, there's no way that, you know, the time would run out. Zoning alone takes four months. You know, your community meeting to have the site plan review process. So at this particular point, this is where we are. And in, and that's really all I can say.
Yeah. I, I don't know what, yeah, John, and by the way, I don't know what your, your concerns are, but I'm a little concerned about, you know, sort of changing the rules in the middle of the game, but. Yeah, John.
Yeah, I want to thank Monique first for keeping things very clear here. And I think we have to own this. Yeah, we're, we're at this point right now where we could potentially find ourselves with no minority applicants. And it's, it's over. It's done for, you know, for and out. And we should have, we should have done something sooner, as Cambridge did, to say, we're not going to let this process unfold and, and sit idly by while all of the, all of the licenses get snapped up by large multi-state, you know, hedge fund financed, white, white ownership companies. And I, I, I have nothing but respect for Mike Ross and, and Tito. I feel like we're, we're hosting a meeting of the Boston City Council All-Stars tonight and it's not too late to run for mayor. I mean, you know, either, either both of you. But be that as it may, as early as 2018, if not earlier, a topic of wide discussion in Massachusetts on a repeat basis was the failure within Massachusetts to achieve goals of minority ownership of some of the licensed retail marijuana establishments. So you didn't have to see it in a regulation to know that this is a social concern. It was a widespread social concern in Massachusetts. The company could have been doing its, its own, at its own initiative, could, could have been doing what was necessary to become a partly minority owned company and to have that representation here tonight. But chose to sort of go forward as it did. And, and, and now you're here tonight without any minority ownership. So, you know, it's, we own the fact that we didn't make it a requirement, but that doesn't mean the applicants, you know, get, get off scot-free if they, they didn't show some initiative on their own to recognize the problem in Massachusetts that all of the licenses were being snapped up by white ownership companies.
Raul?
Thanks. Couple things here. You know, one, I think there's a real opportunity for us at this moment, and this is a critical juncture, to figure out if we're going to get serious about the thing that we keep talking about every time we see Neta and every time we see Sanctuary and now today. So I agree in, in, with respect to, to this, this particular business, having gone through everything we asked them to do. And that, that frankly, our credibility as, as a business partner is, and as a partner, period, is, is on the line. And to, to, to have them do everything we asked them to do and then at the last minute, after significant investments have been made to, to, to then say, sorry. You know, we, we may or may not have found somebody better at this point. I don't know that that makes sense, but I also don't think that's the solution. You know, what I would be willing to do is, is to hold though, is to, is to wait on this vote until we actually figure out what this board is going to get behind. Mr. Green, you said that, that this is up to Town Meeting. Perhaps Town Meeting needs to make the final vote, but this, this board can put the vote forward at Town Meeting. And if we are, if we are at this point, we've got limited options here. It's not like the, the universe of options of what we can do at this point is infinite. There are limited options. You know, Monique has already started to do the work to figure out exactly what they were, what they are and how they might work and what that might look like with respect to bylaw changes. I don't think we're that far away to figuring out if we're behind this. And if we, if we, if we all agree that there should be socioeconomic equity or economic empowerment owned businesses in Brookline, then hell, let's make it happen. And, but what I don't want to do is, is do what we've done in the past, which is have this conversation, vote to approve and then forget we had the conversation and move on to other things. So this maybe is an opportunity, if we were to hold this vote, is, is to say, we're, we have to give ourselves a timeline to figure out a real solution to the problem that I think we're all on board with as a problem and, and, and one that we all agree we need to solve. So I'd be in favor of, of holding this, but, but not indefinitely, holding this and, and really accelerating the pace at which we work toward the solution. And if that means a board vote coming really soon to commit to putting something on the November warrant, even now, I'd love to see something like that happen. And that would give me the faith to say, all right, now we're actually putting, putting our, you know, our, our money where our mouth is or whatever it is. We're, we're actually really committing to providing socioeconomic applicants with an opportunity to do business with Brookline beyond just carriers and delivery. So that's it.
So that's interesting. Heather, you have anything to add to this?
Um, you know, I, it was, it was a lot to process, all of the comments. I'm not sure I really feel good about voting this week. I think we, we need to do some, some homework. I'm also a little remiss that we don't have Town Council here to answer some questions. So I think we really need to ask our Town Council exactly what we can and cannot do, what our options are.
We do have Patty who just joined us.
Hi, I've been here the whole time. I'm sorry I raised my.
Hello, Patty.
I was invisible for some reason. Is there something you wanted to ask?
Well, Heather, why don't you ask?
Um, is there a path forward where we could pause and do what Cambridge is doing or has that ship sailed?
Is there, is there a path?
In other words, can we, can we not, could we not vote on this license tonight, which would have consequences for Mission? And sort of figure out what to do and presumably bring them back and presumably they'd want to come back at a later time to have their license voted on.
So there isn't, I mean, the legal answer is there's no timeframe for decision making, unlike with the special permit, which does have timeframes. Licensing does not. On the other hand, you have, you know, an applicant here who, I, I don't think it's an easy process to go through the special permit process. I think it's, it can be expensive and time consuming and you have someone here who has a special permit. So this is the last step. There isn't, you know, in Brookline, there isn't. The HCA isn't really the issue. I mean, there were some comments about that. We, we give HCAs. It's, it's the kind of the rest of the process and the cap on licensing. And the cap would take time to, to lift. You know, do you, do you have a special town meeting? Do you wait until November? It's obviously too late for me. So wait for how long?
And I, if I could add, I do want to let you guys know that, you know, retailers do need to maintain a lease in the space, you know, until whenever this is decided. So I just think that you should know that, that this is costing real money.
Can I, can I add that there's not one license left? There's one retail license left. There are three other categories of licenses that haven't been tapped at all. And there are two more categories coming. And there are unlimited numbers of licenses and a number of other categories. So the, the ones that have a cap of four are the retail. Help me, Monique. Or recently, social consumption, which we don't have yet, but we, we also have the delivery and the delivery operator and the marijuana courier.
Yeah, and then, and then, so the, the delivery operator and the courier are coming soon. So I think we have the marijuana cultivator. And then I think marijuana manufacturer, if I'm not mistaken. So Patty's right, you know, everyone's really fighting over these retail, but you know, this is also something that I've been trying to explore. Okay, what happened with the rest of the licenses? You know, why are individuals not pursuing them? Is it something, you know, in our zoning? Is it that we don't have existing spaces to accommodate those license types? So there's really a broader, I think, issue. But I was just hired, so you know, I'm doing my investigation and, and so I'm hoping to have some answers soon. But, um, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I put a finer point on the comment that Attorney Coria made? The, the delivery licenses at the CCC level can only go to a company that's owned by fifty-one percent of an equity applicant or certain criteria that you meet, but essentially BIPOC community or someone who's been targeted by the war on drugs. So by definition, Brookline will not be able to, to bring in a majority white company on the delivery licenses. The social consumption licenses have yet to be let. Brookline would have the opportunity to do that. Adding any additional licenses here for retail is also an option. It's been mentioned a number of times. What I'm failing to see and connect is, I mean, how does it help any of that to delay this applicant who's, who's, who's by, by any standard, a good applicant who wants to also enhance their diversity offering, even though it wasn't per se in, in any regulation that we came across? We want to do that because it's the right thing to do and we're, and we're making that turn. But what, what is, what is the benefit to the, to the town to, to delay this company from opening its doors? There's clearly a harm to, to my client. I mean, it's just, it just, there is. And, and it just to have a, a delay, if it was a matter of a week or something, okay, we can all live with that. But to just say, we're going to delay it to sometime in the future that we might get to there, we might not get there. Why would you, why would you tie up this, this business in, in that type of policymaking web? I mean, how is that fair?
Yeah, it's not fair. And furthermore, if, if we were to do that, Mr. Lau would not be able to even begin the process in, in any big way for quite a while. So we're just saying that we don't want any more licenses. So I, I don't know what, what the reason for, for delay is. It looks like Gabriel Mendoza, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Chairman, for hearing me today. Thank you, Board. My name is Gabriel Mendoza. I am the Executive Vice President for Retail Operations for Mission Dispensaries. I am a Latinx male. I have been working with this company for over seven years, starting at the ground floor and working my way all the way up to heading retail operations. I am here to explain to you that this company is not only owned by white people. I am a part owner of this company as well. I have been disproportionately impacted by a failed war on drugs my whole life and so has my family. And so I really urge everyone to, to realize that you're, by delaying this for an indeterminate amount of time, you're not just hurting only white owned company. There are many, many different levels, even at this executive level, who have ownership in this company that are looking to provide a very real value to the citizens of Brookline. And we have been in this process for three years, over three years. And we are at the final stage. And we're just looking to, to be able to provide that value for you guys as, as a minority, as someone who's worked from the bottom up of this company. I just want to frame this as not just a white owned company coming and, and taking opportunity from minorities, because that's just not the case.
Hey, okay, so you, you, you raised the question and I have to ask it. And, and I appreciate, you know, your, your comment. In what way are you an owner? Are you an equity owner of a certain percentage of the parent company?
That's correct. We have shares, shares in the publicly traded company.
I, I didn't see that in the material, but it was a mean thing. Any other comments, John?
To the last comment, I, I must confess, now I'm confused as to why, when our chair brought up this issue earlier in this very meeting, there was no correction made by the response from the company. Instead, the response from the company was, we're going to do something about that. We're going to, you know, we'll get back to you on that. Well, you know, we'll, we'll do something about that and, and report back to you several months from now. Nobody said, oh, but we do have minority ownership. So I, I, I'm kind of wondering what the definition of ownership is. But the other thing I wanted to say, and I'm sorry if this sounds, you know, maybe callous, but quite honestly, to, to answer the question, what would be the point of delaying this? Maybe the point of delaying this is come back to us when you've got significant participation by non-white ownership. And I've already heard a commitment made tonight that they would do that. It's just a question of, are you going to do it now or are you going to promise to do it until after, at, at some point, undetermined after you are given the approval tonight?
Undetermined after you are given the approval tonight.
Hey, Patty, could you answer whether we can do that?
Whether we can, um, wait until there's there's, uh, there's ownership of POCs? Is that what?
Yeah.
If I understand? I mean, I think that's, that could be problematic under the, under the equal protection clause without a certain predicate for it.
Yeah, and I think the, to answer John's, uh, selectmen's, uh, question, the, um, the question that was framed was, was about the, uh, officers of the, of the company. Um, and Gabriel Mendoza is not an officer, he's an Executive Vice President. And we didn't want to get into a tit for tat. We have a good company. There's diversity in the company. There, it's a, it's a good team. It's probably not as diverse as it could be. But to say that the only way you're going to get this license is if you come back with a more diverse company is a different conversation than the conversation we started when we began this conversation. Which was that, we agree with your goals, we share them, and we want to be part of this. That is, that's a much different conversation to say, okay, prove it to us. Otherwise, you're not getting your license. That is unfair.
Yeah.
I'll just say that, that's certainly not my position. I, I don't know whose it is, but it ain't mine. You know, my position is, um, that, um, that I'm, I'm afraid that we're going to make this approval tonight and then kick the can down the road and never actually commit to the thing we, we keep saying that we're committed to. And that, 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 that there's an opportunity here for a momentary pause. Um, and you've already heard me say, I thi- I think our credibility is, is on the line with respect to, um, you know, to, to the commitments that have been made. Um, mutual commitments that have been made between us and, and this particular company that's before us tonight. But I, but I'm also afraid that if we don't give ourselves a reason to get this done expeditiously, that we will not get it done. Um, and you know, if this board is committed to, to, to a process that's quick, um, where we can, we can find out what works and put something forward, um, then, then let's go ahead and do it. We've been talking about it for so long. And I'm afraid we're going to be back where we started, if we don't do something right now.
Well, we have, we have Monique on, on board to actually do that. Um, you know, I, I trust her to, uh, come up with a plan that, uh, you know, we can, we can act on. You know, so we don't have to worry about it falling through the cracks or anything. Okay, so, uh, tell me what you want to do, Board. Okay.
Well, I'll just note, there's at least one person that hasn't had, had an opportunity to speak that would like to, um, to give public comment. If the, the public hearing, I think, is still open.
Uh, yeah, it can be, it's so open. I, I didn't see anyone.
I think it's Regina.
So, uh, Devin, is there someone raising their hand? Who'd you say it was?
Yes, I had chatted you, uh, Chair. Uh, Regina Froly is the next person signed up for public comment. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Regina Froly, community member. I'm a little perplexed, perplexed even more than when I'm hearing from Vance Goyack or Raul. And Sister Russ, I've been involved in the issues for, before Nettie got its license. I was very involved. The issue of minorities has always been on the table. The issue of minority participation has always been local. I don't know why you can say this is a last minute curve. It isn't. And Monique, who may be new, hit the nail on the head. It's a systemic issue and it's the reflection of failure on the part of this board to have a policy and to get EDAB involved so that these minority people who are interested in doing this get mentored into knowing how to do this. Mr. Lau, from what I've heard tonight, hasn't been part of a conversation. Why, why not? That should be a policy that this board and EDAB executes. And then, and mentors, like a small business administration mentors these minority people who feel that they need to, they have the means, the will and the knowledge to do something, but may lack some of the, the other skills. Why aren't we hearing about that? Why aren't there public meetings about it? It, it's quite disingenuous to say this hasn't, this is a last minute curve. Well, it isn't. It really isn't. It's just that business, and I'm not picking on mission, the nature of business is to move ahead and do what they do. And if they not forced to have to consider these things early in the process, then they're not going to do it. And that's just the nature of business. So they should have known, if they didn't know, they should have known that this was an issue and this board should be leading the policymaking. They just should. You just should. And you should be coordinating, collaborating very tightly with EDAB so that this doesn't keep happening. You shouldn't have to create more licenses to make something that you still haven't got a policy about happen. You're only hearing complaints of people coming to the, the meeting. Let's do better than that on many things, but what's before you is the marijuana issue. Thank you very much.
Okay, look, I'm going to call for a vote. Um, you know, it is what it is and, and, you know, the consequences will be what they are. I move approval of the license with, uh, Mission. Uh, Cannabis Company. Mission LLC, I think it's called. Uh, on favor. Start off with Heather.
I'm staying.
Staying, okay. Uh, who's next? Raul?
Staying.
John?
I'm staying.
And Chair votes yes. So what?
Does that actually carry it?
Pardon me?
Does that actually carry it? One vote?
Well, that's the majority.
It's the majority.
Okay, so, uh, let's move on.
We appreciate it very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the, members of the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Recreation, uh, let's see, Department, Departmental Budget.
Bernard?
Yes.
If I may, just, you know, before we move on to another topic, and I realize, you know, the hour is growing late, but maybe what is warranted is, uh, for us to have a, um, a meeting with Town Council and Monique to talk about what our options are to hit a pause button. And maybe, uh, request a special town meeting sometime this summer so that we can address this issue so that we're not faced with the exact same situation during another licensing hearing.
Okay. You want to do that this week, which means Friday? Special meeting of the Board?
I think send a doodle to find out, you know, when we can all make it.
Okay, I, I, I do want to let you guys know that, um, the next license, the next, the next retail applicant will be on the way shortly. So I, just a heads up.
It does need to happen within the next two weeks.
Okay, maybe next few days. I mean, if another license is coming up, I assume shortly means the 11th. We can do it next week.
Um, okay, I can send a doodle poll and we can, do we need to decide right now at, at?
No, no.
Okay, all right, we'll be in touch then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can we announce simply, simply announce a freeze?
Freeze on what?
A free, a freeze on taking actions on further applicants until such time as we have acted. Um, you know, uh, according to what Heather just described. I mean, uh, I, I think Heather has a very good approach to this, but it's going to be meaningless if in two weeks from now, we we've let out the fourth license and, and that's that.
Okay, is Patty still here? Can we do that, Patty?
It does not appear that she is still on Zoom.
Well, yeah, it's just a question of, uh, what we put on the agenda. If, if, uh, if we can do that, uh, and I don't see why we can't, although I haven't given that any thought.
We can answer these questions after this meeting.
Yeah.
We want to throw out the proposal.
Right. Remember, we have a 10:30 deadline and it's going to be enforced. So, next item is Departmental Budget, uh, for the School Department. I see, uh, I see Jim Marie's here and, um, Mary Ellen is here and Mariah is here, Mariana Brega. Okay, so, speak.
Well, uh, th- thank you very much for, uh, having us here tonight. And, uh, we're going to go through our budget, uh, and Mary Ellen, if you can share your screen, we'll, uh, give you an overview of where the budget stands. Okay, as we begin our budget every year and every meeting and every time we talk about the budget, we show our mission, which really keeps us focused on what we're about, uh, students and what we believe our mission is about in serving students. So we remind ourselves of that every time we look at the budget. Okay, Mary Ellen? Okay, so it's taken us quite a while to finalize our budget. And part of the reasons for that really have to do with the, with COVID. And the Remote Learning Academy, uh, really ended up being a ninth school in the system. There were over 700 students who opted to in the K8 to be, uh, fully remote. And bringing that online was, uh, quite a challenge, but decommissioning that school is equally challenging because there were a large number of teachers who were hired to staff that school and they had one-year contracts and we had to, um, make certain that when we addressed that, that we were paying close attention to our contractual obligations and returning teachers to the brick and mortar schools, uh, that had professional status and were not one-year appointees. So that was a, a pretty complex, uh, activity that took us a while to get through. And, uh, we're also dealing with enrollment changes and there are significant enrollment changes in the schools. To the tune of around 700 students who are fewer students in the schools than we were anticipating and we believe that's connected to the pandemic, particularly with international students. Uh, and as we are, we're looking at programs across the school buildings, we have to pay very close attention to uh, equity in our programming and our staffing. So all of that took a tremendous amount of time. And in developing the budget, uh, this year, we paid very close attention to documentation of every budget request. Uh, as, as we were looking at shifting in enrollments, we're also looking at staffing in a way that makes sense, but justifying every request. Um, and finalizing the projected enrollments in grades K to one, uh, is still a moving target. Kindergarten in particular, uh, is the most volatile, uh, because we don't, they were preschool before they came in. When we started the budget process, we had made a decision that we would take grades two through 11 and we would roll those classes forward. That's called a cohort survival. Those students would go to the next grade and we would build our budget based on the student enrollments that we had in grades two through 11 and we would roll them up. Grades K and one, because those are volatile and we don't have, uh, good numbers on that in, in any year. Uh, we decided we would build a budget based on our commercial company, the, the Cropper Report on our enrollment projections. And so we built the budget on those projections. However, as you will see, those projections did not materialize and in grades K and one and not all of grade one, but in, in the kindergarten in particular, the enrollments, uh, much lower than anticipated. So that's, uh, causing us to do some, uh, rebalancing of classes. Or, or reductions actually, uh, of classes. And as we did start of this program, uh, this process, we adhere to the goals of adhering to school committee guidelines. School, the school committee developed guidelines and we adhere to those guidelines through the whole process. Uh, and we also, uh, work to minimize reduction in force. We, we want to maintain our, uh, uh, teaching force to the extent possible, but we have to be responsible in staffing the schools according to enrollment needs. And we want to optimize and extend the use of one-time revenues. That's a challenge. Some of those revenues, uh, used as replacement, uh, revenues and, uh, and, and some of them are going to be used as one-time revenue. So that, so going through all that, uh, and it's still done because the grade of the kindergarten has, is really dominated all of our time. Okay, Mary Ellen? Mary Ellen, can you take us through the numbers as we did the iterations from back?
Sure, so, um, uh, what we're showing here from January to April, um, are the sort of changes in revenue information as we kind of got, we received it. I want to point out to you that the FY22 School Committee request as of February 11th, um, was a budget vote and a request of the School Committee. Um, that was not a number attributable to the Town School Partnership, but that was going to be the ask at that point in time of, um, town meeting or of advisory of this board to be considered. Um, right now, we are using the current Town School Partnership, um, number. And we are using, um, the SRT2 funds, um, a, a portion, a portion of them, a, a portion we've already purchased. Um, we leasing of tents this spring. So the balance of those funds, which are supposed to be available through 23, we are actually applying 100% of that to our, our budget for the, uh, for 22. The SRT3 funds, we are, um, also applying. Um, we are, will be receiving more specific guidelines, um, around May 11th with regard to the restrictions of those funds. Uh, but we believe in terms of how we've, uh, how we've developed our budget that we'll be able to meet those, um, spending requirements. Um, yet to be determined as well is, um, the American Rescue Plan, um, allocation or apportionment that may be available or decided. Um, School Committee is making that request, um, to be considered. Um, as we still have a deficit and we are using SRT2 and SRT3 funds as a one-year, um, stopgap as opposed to, uh, pacing those funds over the, um, intended multiple tended two to three-year fiscal years, um, for use. The circuit breaker, those are our reimbursements for our out-of-district tuitions and actually now, um, out-of-district transportation. Um, and we typically budget that recurring revenue, um, for, at the amount that we get reimbursed every, um, July. Um, we, we assume, um, and we pretty much always receive the same, the same amount or a little bit more, um, the next year. The tuition and materials fees are, are students of employees of the town and, uh, the School Committee has consistently voted in a 3% increase to that fee. Um, and so those fees are included as a recurring revenue. So right now, we're working with known revenue at this point of 128 million, 166. Um, our, our salaries, um, and our budget, um, have been, uh, the salaries and personnel and positions funded has been pretty dynamic, um, throughout this process. You'll see this number kind of go up and down. Um, reflecting a variety of decisions that are being made, um, enrollment um, projections that we utilize, sectioning of students, um, and maintaining an average of, uh, 19 students for our K8 students. We've gone through all of our expense accounts, um, to really isolate what are the needs of the district. And made, made some adjustments for those. The increase that you see for contracted services is primarily due to tuitions, out-of-district tuitions and our out-of-district transportation for those students. Um, the School Committee has also attempted to maintain or retain in this budget, um, additional supports for the Public Building Division. Um, his, the original request from the Public Building Division was about 1.1 million. Um, we've been able to retain at least 471,000. We appreciate and acknowledge that, um, the Director Charlie Simmons' request was larger. Um, and deferred maintenance is a topic that the, uh, School Committee Capital Subcommittee is continuing to take up and uh, review with him and, and monitor. So today, um, before we hit the School Committee meeting on Thursday, uh, we're dealing with an $863,000, uh, funding gap at this point. We're finalizing the, um, reductions around our sections due to enrollment. Um, now that we're in late April, early May, um, and we're finalizing our um, last personnel and funding positions, um, which, um, OpenGov will be live, live at some point this week and then our funded positions will also be live on OpenGov, um, probably late. Um, probably late next, next week after the um, principals and administrators have a chance to proof them one more time before. Uh, we get to town meeting.
So uh, our ongoing uh, steps to close the gap. Which we recognize, uh, we need to continue to work at that. Uh, we're holding uh, the, so, so, sort of the balance here that we're looking at. Is the reduction in enrollment is um. Is, is a cause for concern and in terms of, we're anticipating students returning to the system. And so we, we need to build our, our, our budget. So that it will, will be able to absorb those students uh, in, into the system when they come in, yet. We need to build our budget in a way that uh. Provides for right-sized classes in the event that we don't get that many students in. So that's the balance we're working with. So we're holding our classes in K eight at the average of nineteen. The, the range goes up to twenty-one, probably. Seventeen to twenty-one or twenty-two, but the average is nineteen. So that we have a, a little room in each class for uh, students who may return. And then in light of the reduced enrollments, we continue to work with principals and coordinators. To review all of our programs for efficiencies and alternative models, uh, delivery models. Um, we continue to review all areas of the school, including supplies, materials, equipment, personnel. And um. And again, I, I, just to emphasize, it's the kindergarten right now where the enrollments are lower, where we uh. We will need to, we will need to reduce some sections in kindergarten. Going forward. Uh, and we're going to continue working with the town to identify um, American Rescue Plan funds uh, through the school, the town school partnership. So we have the upcoming budget presentations. We have uh. Uh, this evening with the select board hearing, uh, we have a school committee meeting on Thursday, Thursday evening, where we will be presenting. Uh, the, the uh, final budget uh, to the school committee. The school committee finance subcommittee meets uh, May uh, thirteenth and will go to town meeting on May nineteenth. Uh, the budget, uh, as Mary Ellen referenced, open, open gov will be up and running shortly. And the budget can be accessed through our website. Uh, it's up there, gets posted and gets updated on a regular basis, so you can. Stay abreast of any changes that are made as we are coming to our final uh, uh, decisions on the budget.
Hey, any questions from the board? We have one minute before our mandatory. Meeting end and we're gonna have, have to put a number of warrant articles on another meeting unless people want to rush through them and vote them. Heather?
Um, so if I saw from the slides correctly, it's roughly a seven, seven and a half million dollar budget. Ask. I'm not sure that that's what the town administrator had programmed. So what is the plan to? Uh, address the, the differential?
Mary Ellen?
Um, I'm just gonna share the revenue screen so I make sure that I'm on the same page that um. Look, Board Hamilton is. Um, so is this what you were referring to in terms of the seven million ask? The six hundred, six point six million? This revenue increase?
A different slide, but.
This one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I think to point out is that the revenue, um. The revenue is roughly six point six million, um, and our, 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 we're eight hundred and sixty-three is our gap right now. Uh, we would be planning on closing that, uh, or looking to close that. With um, the kindergarten reductions and just doing a one final scrub of the budget and personnel budget to make sure. Because personnel has been the one that has had the most dramatic changes. And making sure that um, we don't have any double counts, that everything is. Set so that when we publish those position lists, those are final. Final positions that we are going to fund and able to fund frankly within the revenue projection that we have. Going forward, so um, the um, town administrator, I'm just gonna flip back a slide. Um, programmed in the one hundred and twenty million, one ninety-seven, seven seventeen. Um, and then the school committee is filling in the rest um, with S R one, S R two, S R three. Circuit breaker and materials fee. Um, circuit breaker and materials fee are usual annual offsets that we have to our budget. The S R two and S R three funds are new federal funds um, that we are using to fill in our funding gap. Does that help?
Actually, uh, the differential is not as striking as I thought it was and. This is actually not unusual given um, past budget years, but thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. John?
Yes, um, I, I, I would like to know if you can give us tonight the. Uh, given the, the lowered enrollment and given the budget, the, as of tonight. What is the cost per pupil that is projected in this budget? And how does that compare to, I'm going to say actually the um. Twenty nineteen cost per pupil because twenty twenty was sort of aberrational and I'm not sure all the numbers are, are in yet.
Um, I don't have the cost per pupil available tonight. I haven't calculated that. Um. I typically would not calculate that until that we are final and have a final number. Um, actually really don't calculate it until the end of your report is done because then we really know what the final per pupil is for the year, but. Um, so I don't have that available tonight.
I think, um, I think I would like to have that before um. We finish this process of reviewing the school department budget.
But we're not gonna be voting or anything until we get to the Warren article, but Warren article.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know how you evaluate the budget if you don't have a number for the cost per pupil. That you can compare to, you know, a prior year or the year before that.
Um, to be quite honest, that's not a measurement that the school committee has used um, in the past, we prospectively. So we've used other, other measures in terms of our, the number of students we have in our sections. Um, such as, um, you heard the interim superintendent talk about an average of nineteen. Students per section in our K eight schools, um, we've not used that per pupil amount.
But it's a number you're required to report to the state, right?
That's right.
Actually, yeah, well, the state actually calculates it off of our end of year report. And it's published on their website. So we certainly can get that for you as it's been published and up, up to the, uh, but I have not calculated it for this budget.
Well, it's a very useful.
Sorry, isn't it a simple calculation? Just uh.
That's what I keep thinking. I could do the calculation myself, but I'm trying to give them, you know.
I just simply said I don't have it for this evening and I, I don't have a final budget to be able to do the calculation.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? And by the way, um, I am told that we must. Um, vote the warrant articles that are next on our list, so bear that in mind, we're already over. Um, but it was an informal policy that we set to end at ten thirty. Which means I think that we can deviate from it necessary. So any further questions? Heather?
Hopefully this is just a clarification question. So we don't have a final budget, but we're gonna be voting on this in a few minutes?
No, no, we're not voting on, on, well, wait, we.
Oh, you vote on the um, town school partnership of town meeting appropriation, which is the one, one twenty, one hundred and twenty, oops, sorry. One hundred and twenty million. Uh, one ninety-seven, seven, one, seven. That's what town meeting votes. Thank you.
And between now and town meeting, you have to figure out how to fill in that eight hundred thousand dollar gap.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, we have a number of warrant articles. I think most of them, uh, we've, we've talked to death, so we don't really need to. Uh, agonize any further on them, um, unless people think we do. Uh, to start off with warrant article thirty-three, emergency, emergency funds notification. Um, let's see, is Melissa here? Is her, walk us through this?
I think this was just a move to reconsider so that one of the select board members can change his position on it.
Okay, so uh, I move reconsideration. All in favor, uh, Heather?
Aye.
Row?
Aye.
John?
Uh, aye.
Okay, and I vote aye. So um. Were we considering, uh, what was our position before and what, what, what is the new position based on probably the advisory committee?
I think most of us voted for the advisory version, but uh, Raoul, I believe, wants to change his position to support the petitioner's version.
Okay, I'm sorry, and I.
Yeah, that's it.
I have that written down and it was a long night, even though it's only ten thirty. Okay, so um. Uh, I move favorable action on the advisory committee uh, version. Uh, and of course, we're open vote, uh, no action. Um, Heather?
Aye.
Row?
I, I want to say aye on the petitioner's motion. I remember we talked about that before, that, you know, the option of being able to sit still favorably. Cause I don't wanna, I, you know, I'm not against the AC version. I just think the petitioner's is superior. That's it.
Okay, do you, you wanna um, for the record, vote on the petitioner's version first and then uh, assuming it fails, vote on the advisory committee?
I mean, that's not gonna be really reflected in the um, combined reports. It's just gonna be our majority vote.
We're required to have a call vote, so the, the vote will actually count as a no.
Okay, all right, then I guess I'll say no.
Okay. Uh, who's next? John?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Yeah, Melissa, maybe if we could just in the description say what, you know, one board member, um, you know, favor the petitioner's version. That's it, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, warrant article nine and uh, I guess to start out with warrant article nine.
So warrant article nine is the budget uh, vote. The board had the public hearing last week on the budget where I uh, presented the board with the changes. Uh, that have happened since the financial plan came out. You had the town administrator's memo. As backup which explained the recommendations around the allocation of additional G I C funding. Changes in debt service and then recommendations around the select board budget for uh, supporting the work of the reform and reimagining committee work. And then also the proposal from the council on aging as well. Um, there have been no changes since we talked about this last week. And um, the only new information I have that Nathan Schritz has decided not to move his amendment. So um, what we have. Um, is the advisory committee motion which they voted last week. Um, and that represents the, the same uh. Information we discussed last week. Uh, they did vote the town administrator's recommendation for the school department budget. Uh, because they have not received a school committee vote on the budget, so that they, that's why they, they stayed with the uh, town administrator recommendations.
Okay, um, so I move uh, favorable action, warrant article nine, the budget. All in favor? Heather?
Aye.
Row?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, uh, budget amendment, warrant article ten.
So I know that the one we last met, the petitioner had been working with the moderator to try and address some cha- um, some issues identified with this article. I, I believe that there might still be some struggle with that. I have not received any revised motion. Um, I don't know if that's still on, um, if she can provide an update as to where she's at. And I don't know, uh, if the, oh, here she is.
Hi, Deborah. You have been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable.
I cannot tell a lot. Uh, which, which, which warrant article are we discussing?
Ten, the budget amendment.
Hey, uh, it's, it's still in the works. No new news.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that one in the supplement for board action. We'll have a punt on it until we have an update.
Okay, next, warrant article twenty-four, sustainability division. Uh, there's no, there's nothing new there, right?
Oh, yes, there is. That's, um, advisor did, did what they do. They, they tweaked it a little bit, so I'm, I'm just pulling up the changes. So essentially. They struck subject to approval thereof by the director and the select board. They felt it was excessive language. Um, that is implicit in the existing language. And so um, this is in the last three point one-two, point one-two. Uh, so this is their new language. So the um, recommendation would be to uh, vote the advisory committee version of article twenty-four. And Allison and Jocelyn were fine with those changes.
Okay, anyone have any objections to that change? It seems fairly straightforward to me. Okay, so I move favorable uh, action on the advisory committee uh, version of warrant article twenty-four. All in favor? Heather?
Aye.
Row?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, next, warrant article twenty-five, fossil fuel-free Emerald Island. Anything new there?
Um, so I have the amended language that was voted by the advisory committee. Um, I don't know if there is a petitioner in the audience that may want to explain. How they, uh, where they are in relation to the advisory committee vote. Um, I don't believe that there are. I know this has been a work in progress for a while, so I think this is pretty close to where it was uh, when we last discussed. This article.
Making the board aware that I'm promoting Kathleen Scanlon.
Hi, everyone. Um, did you, Melissa, did you ask if I could explain the changes in this version?
Yeah, that would be great if you could walk the board through where you're at with the article.
Okay, so um, in response to some suggestions by the E-Dab um, committee, we um. Uh, made some um, changes to the article in that we moved the definitions into the same section as the Emerald Island Special District. The original submitted warrant article had it um. Elsewhere in the bylaw. And um, we also um. Uh, changed um, the definition of labs. And the definition of fossil fuel-free to match warrant article twenty-six. I think that was it.
Okay, uh, any questions from the select board? Anyone have issues with the changes? Okay, so I move approval of warrant article twenty-five, fossil fuel-free Emerald Island. All in favor? Heather?
Aye.
Um, Row?
Aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, warrant. Thank you. Warrant article twenty-six, fossil fuel-free incentives. Uh, where are we there?
I think that might, might still be a moving part. Um, I think you may want to Kathleen back up. Um, because I don't have an update on twenty-six.
Okay, Kathleen, can you tell us what's going on with warrant article twenty-six?
I think that um, just, uh, Jesse Gray or Lisa Cunningham's in the audience, they might be able to give you the better update.
All right. So since uh, we presented last week, a week ago, um, there have not been really any substantive uh, changes. Um, however, there was a vote at the planning board for to one-to-one in favor. And there was a vote at advisory tonight, which I think was twenty-four to one, uh, with two extensions in favor. Right, that's it.
Okay, so no changes since our last visit with this article. So I'm a little favorable action on the warrant article twenty-six, fossil fuels free in, incentives on, on favor. Heather?
Aye.
Row?
Aye.
John? John?
Aye.
Yeah, chair votes aye. Um, warrant article twenty-seven, affordable housing bidding. Um, is there anything new there that seemed to be fairly straightforward, as I recall?
That's Kathleen as well?
Yes, yeah, yeah, really. Yeah, so no changes.
Okay, anyone have any problems with voting this article? Or any questions or issues? Okay, I'm more approval of warrant article twenty seven, affordable housing bidding on favor, Heather?
I.
Rowell?
I.
John?
I.
Chair votes I. Warrant article thirty four, payment in addition to taxes.
So the board had previously voted this and of course the advisory committee did a little tweaks. So I do have some revised language for you. Essentially what they did at the end of thirty four was put something, why stop at ten million dollars? We'll take whatever anyone is going to give us. So this, this language right here was added by the advisory committee.
Can you pull that up again?
Sure.
I'm trying to think. Something. So there were some issues that Raoul and I had regarding potential pressure. And I think I talked to Paul and, and we talked about a change to address that. Was there? Let's see, is there anything like this? Okay, so is Paul in the audience?
We don't know that he is.
Yeah, I don't see him. So the, huh? I'm sorry, Heather?
I just have one quick question. So with these changes, will you guys be voting in favor of it? Because I was never completely on board. So I'm glad that we have the opportunity to revisit and revote, but. Now I don't really know how I'm going to vote.
Okay, maybe we need to get Paul Harris back here to, to. You know, discuss, you know, where he is with the changes and all.
So he, I believe, is supporting the advisory committee motion at this point. If you wanted to add additional language, you'd probably want to engage with him on that. Is any other changes that are coming?
Okay. Can I see the, the, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Hold on one minute. This was a three to two vote.
Yeah, I remember. Go down some more?
The, this is the end of it right here.
Oh, therefore be resolved. Okay. Okay, the committee charged with developing rules and regulations for dispersal of funds, I guess, addresses my concern. Rowell, what, what, does that address your concern? I mean, it's not something new, but it's, it's.
Yeah, no, I, I think the, I think the influence issues haven't been resolved here. I was, Paul gave it another shot over at the diversity commission, which decided not to vote on this warrant article in any direction. And, and I think the, the sort of the, the way that this has evolved was instead of giving it directly to the town. To give it to the Brookline Community Foundation instead and which would be the shepherd of this. And that way the, the donation could be anonymous. And what I told Paul was, I think that's a step in the wrong direction. I think that that adds even more opportunity for influence to say, you know, things like, you know, and, and, and I don't know if people would do this, but hey, select board chair. I see that you have a real interest in X priority. You know, you know, I'm happy to help fund that priority by giving money through the Brookline Community, Community Foundation to the town to fund that. But by the way, I have X issue that I'd like you to address.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Don't know that there's a way around that at this point. I, I, and I told him, I appreciate what he's trying to do. I would, I would love it if we were able to sort of have a wealth tax or something like that, that would, you know, be able to put more money in our coffers. I just don't think this is the right mechanism.
Yeah. I'm not that concerned about that anymore. I mean, you know, we can set up some regulations to, you know, you know, conflicts of interest type regulations. And, you know, I mean, if people, if, if. Wealthy people buy board members with, with this mechanism, I mean, we're in big trouble. So. I don't know what other people think. Do you want to vote on this or what?
Kind of need to, right? I mean.
Yeah, we need to.
I mean, we, we already did, but.
So you're not in line with the advisory committee? So if anything, to make town meeting easier, I would recommend either coming in line with advisory or voting no action.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to come in line with the advisory committee just to get this, this on the town meetings agenda. So all in favor of favorable action on the advisory committee?
Bernard, if you could just make a motion to reconsider, or actually I think Heather needs to make it since Bernard and Raoul voted against it.
Okay.
I move for reconsideration.
Okay, all in favor, Heather?
I.
Uh, Rowell?
I.
John?
I.
And chair votes I, so I move approval of the favorable action on the advisory committee version. Of warrant article thirty four. On favor, Heather?
Epstein.
Rowell?
Nope.
John?
I.
And chair votes I. Okay, that's the end of the meeting. That's it. We're, we're finished. And how late? Well, we went over by twenty two minutes.
Not bad.
Yeah, that could be worse. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.